Jennifer, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Is your motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Need approval of the February 13, 2014 minutes. Are presented additions or corrections? Need to know those at this time. Motion second, approve the minutes of February 13, 2014. All in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries and those minutes are now official. Members of the council that's in the audience that would like to speak could come forward. Karen Bennett, who else?
Good evening, everyone. I am councilmember Sandra Moore. I represent District 17, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak for just a brief few minutes. I normally don't speak, but I am today. I have, just wanted to say thank you also to Jennifer Carlet for helping move this Clayton Avenue UDO along because without her it just would not be possible and the planning staff as well. So again, I want to say thank you to you as well. This UDO was very, very important to the Clayton Avenue neighbors, and what I liked about it was the fact that they were able to come together, work together, and maybe they disagreed, but they still worked together on this UDO, and I do appreciate that very, very much. And I am very supportive of the fact that they were able to come together as neighbors and acknowledge what changes that they want to implement because they're very invested in their neighborhood. So with that being said, again, I'm very, very supportive of what they did as neighbors to come together. That is very important, and that makes my life easier because, as you well know, always zoning issues are very difficult for councilmembers, but I do appreciate what these neighbors did. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Council Lady Bennett.
Good afternoon. My name is Councilwoman Karen Bennett. I appreciate you all and everything that you do. I seem like I see you pretty regularly, which is a good sign. That means our economy's picking up. I'm here on item number 11. It's on your consent agenda. It is the landmark overlay for Gallatin Road. This kind of wraps up where we were fixing where the SP was changed out last year, and I really want to thank the staff. They've worked really hard on this, and especially Mr. Dwayne has been excellent to work with. Basically, what this does is, at least this is Karen's version, is it preserves the houses that we have between Virginia and Broadmoor, but it opens up the opportunity for the property owners to do a little bit more commercially with it, where we might have the advantage of possibly getting like coffee shops, restaurants, retail, that type of businesses in there. So very excited about this prospect. We had a meeting Tuesday night. We had about 21, 22 people there, and it was all very, very positive, so I ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Lady Allen?
I'm going to wait until you're done.
Okay. Any other councilmembers that I've overlooked? Rick, you want to give us an update on Nashville Next?
Right. Greg's going to do a discussion about where we are on the scenario development. Where Greg was? There he is. You're up, Greg. And next time you actually see Tiffany, we're going to talk about the community engagement process.
All right. Is that better? All right. Thank you, Greg Clarkson with the Planning Department. I'm going to walk through the way that I walked you through last week, what we've been doing for the past year in Nashville Next. I'm now going to talk through what we're working on right now. A big part of that is developing our scenarios. So as we're using them, what we want, what we mean by scenarios are basically a plausible story about the future. We want to use a story that sort of connects changes that we can make in our land uses and our infrastructure and then explore the consequences of those decisions, of those decisions, in all of the other areas that the people of Nashville have told us they care about: arts and culture, housing affordability, health and livability, that sort of thing. As we work through these, you know, kind of looking at the physical form of Nashville, there's a few common elements to all of the scenarios that we want to use to keep them comparable and sort of keep the community conversation moving along. The first is that they're looking at the same growth numbers. They're all allocating about 100,000 houses, 200,000 people, and 300,000 jobs, and they also all have the same roadway improvements. Third is they treat some key flashpoints in Nashville's kind of ongoing discussion over the direction the growth should take from the past few years. We try to treat those the same. In particular, we're not identifying Bell's Bend or the fairgrounds for activity centers, and all of the scenarios show some form of higher capacity transit on West End. Last, the scenarios kind of play with how we accommodate different housing and employment growth. We're looking at kind of where we do the heavy lifting for that. None of this is meant to say that smaller neighborhood centers and nodes won't continue to happen and develop over time. I don't want to go into a lot of detail on this, but I do want to give you a sense of what kind of the guts of the scenarios are like. We have a tool called Community Viz, which is basically a GIS tool that we use to model development decisions. And there are three things that we feed into Community Viz. The first is the supply of land. Davidson County minus the satellite cities, but also minus floodplains, steep slopes, those kind of environmental constraints. Second is market suitability. These are 13 factors that tell us how likely or unlikely a property is to develop or redevelop over the next 25 years. Things like retail proximity, transportation features, that sort of thing. And then the third are policies, land use policies, either future land use characteristics or character areas such as rural, suburban, and urban. We feed those three things into Community Viz, and what it tells us is where we should expect population and employment to locate over the next 25 years based on that. And then once it places, you know, more people here, more jobs there, it also gives us some quantitative indicators on some basically land use and transportation measures such as vehicle miles traveled, amount of land developed, that sort of thing. So as an example of the kind of thing that Community Viz will tell us, there's three maps up on the screen. The one with kind of pink blobs show over the next 25 years where our new employment concentrations. The blue blobs show over the next 25 years where our new household concentrations. And then the third map are, you know, kind of key transportation features. And then what we're working on right now is how do we put those together in a way that's sort of easily accessible to the public? And so, you know, kind of combining all of those, this is our, what we call our business as usual trend, or business as usual or trend scenario, you know, projecting out, based on the model, where do we expect growth to happen, you know, just without any additional interventions? Some infill development, some continued outward development, and then, you know, trying to play with, how do we represent that? Kind of taking those blues for households, pinks for jobs, and then overlaying them to see kind of those concentrations of purple where we expect kind of mixed-use development. This is the only scenario that we've run so far through Community Viz. The next three that I'm going to show you are basically the policy inputs that we provide Community Viz. And so the first one is sort of an expanded downtown scenario. The idea here is we're taking the current transit vision that Metro, MTA, and the MPO have been developing over the past several years, which is very much a hub-and-spoke system where everything leads into downtown, and we say, how do we make this work a little bit better? And so what we've identified here is, you know, you need to make downtown even more so than it is today really the population and economic hub of the county. And so we've got some purple areas there showing, you know, much, much higher intensity of use in downtown, in midtown, in metro center, and to the southeast a little bit. We also say, well, you want to accommodate additional housing close to downtown, even if it's not necessarily right in downtown. And so in the light blue areas, we're looking at, you know, kind of encouraging a little bit of infill in neighborhoods near to downtown, but then also along those transit pikes coming out of downtown, with the idea that you want to accommodate, you know, additional population in a way that they can get to downtown easily, because that's, you know, again, going to be your employment center.
Rick, if I just could, one thing here. These scenarios actually came out of the mapping issues and exercises that we did with the community. So as what Greg talked about at the last meeting, he showed those mapping exercises and we digitized those, and so these were really what came out of those.
Right. And so two of the most popular ones, one of them was this kind of expanded downtown view. A lot of people, as you saw in those maps, put a lot of growth downtown. The other one was where people were putting a lot of growth onto the pikes. And so this next scenario, we call Pikes and Centers, takes the transit vision that we had in the previous one and then starts adding in a lot more crosstown connections so that you can get through different parts of the county without going through downtown. And so here, the idea is, you know, we continue to have some smaller of those purple intense areas scattered throughout the county, but we're also building up more on all of the pikes, the ones that go into downtown and the crosstown connectors. The next scenario is kind of more of a centers with infill where we keep that transit network with crosstown connectors, but we remove some of the development along the pikes and focus more into a smaller set of intense activity centers throughout the county. So these are smaller, or fewer, but more intense compared to the other one. And then we pair this with some residential infill close to each one of these, within about a quarter mile of each one of these centers. We would encourage some context-sensitive infill. One of the things that we want to try to do through the conversation about these scenarios is see if there's a way that we can give some future policy direction on how infill can work a little bit better for the city right now. You know, is there a way that we can find a way that it respects the context that it's fitting within, but also helps us adapt to some changing housing market preferences that we've been seeing and struggling with over the past several years? We know that it's difficult for people to sometimes make sense of exactly what these maps with different blobs mean, so we're also working on different ways of visualizing these scenarios. This is an example of a downtown visualization where we want to zero in on a few key places and show what does it mean, you know, what are the differences between these scenarios in terms of how they'd be built out? We also know that, you know, the public wants to understand what do these scenarios mean, not just, you know, kind of where the people go, but for, you know, things that are important to them, such as transportation and affordability. So this is an example of how we want to bring the results of those indicators to the public to, you know, allow them a chance to weigh these scenarios and tell us what's important to them. On the left, you see two of the possible outcomes: transportation choices and household affordability. The letters across the top, A would be our business-as-usual scenario. We're holding that constant. That's what everything's being compared against. And then B, C, and D have arrows that show this one performs better, this one performs worse, this one's about the same. That's, we think that's about the kind of detail that we can, you know, provide in a very broad public engagement exercise to get some feedback on what direction we should go. Right now, we're working with nine of those outcomes that we'd like to present to the public: transportation affordability, but also environmental quality, neighborhood variety, fiscal impact. Are we expanding opportunities for youth, children, and seniors, economic opportunity, equity, and then health and wellness? And so how we want to kind of manage this a little bit is we've got some quantitative data from Community Viz in our modeling, and then we want to rely on our housing resource team, this team of about 20 to 30 experts on six different topics that we've brought together, who know the topic, who know Nashville, and can help us make some assessments and say, you know, for affordability compared to business as usual, does each scenario improve or worsen affordability across income levels? And that rating is what we would take to the public to weigh in on. Our goal would be to not, you know, kind of have a voting process where the top voting scenario wins, but to delve into, you know, why people prefer different things. And so we'd ask, you know, which one or two scenarios do you prefer, and then why? Out of those indicators, what are the ones that made you choose that? And we'd have, you know, as we've done throughout the process, a number of different ways for people to participate. That's what Tiffany's going to delve into in a lot more detail at your next meeting. Thank you, and I can take questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I do have a question for Greg. The different scenarios are not necessarily, we're not asking which of these is appropriate and which is inappropriate necessarily. Ultimately, I'm assuming that the general plan is going to represent a variety of strategies, right? Not just one over the other.
What we're looking to put together is one preferred scenario. We expect it to be a composite of several of them that sort of takes, you know, what the public sees as the strengths of different ones and, you know, try to put them together into a composite.
Greg. And we're just, so you know, we're in the process, this will be basically reviewed by the public from May through July. We'll have that out there for, and we're developing a whole engagement process for that three-month period that we'll talk to you a little bit, or about in one of the future meetings before that.
Greg?
One of the things that I've noticed over the growth of Davidson County, and you read a lot of statistics about transportation, the transportation piece. One of the worst traffic in the United States in Davidson County. I know that in our area, in the southeast part of Davidson County with the large household area, does the plan also include expansion of roads and also transit? I noticed it had some of that, but I want to make sure that we're addressing all modes of transportation and, because in, on Harding Place and Nolansville Road, going out towards Nolansville, there's not an interstate near there hardly.
Right.
And it becomes a major issue for southeast, and I know other parts of the county as well, and I just want to make sure that's part of the discussions.
It is. All of the scenarios incorporate the, basically the planned roadway improvements that Davidson County has worked with the MPO to plan for over the next 25 years. But then we go beyond that to look at, you know, kind of the key transit improvements. And so the scenarios all put both of those together to see how they work to both increase access to transit, increase walkability, but also manage congestion.
Does that include T-Dot? Are y'all working with T-Dot?
Yes.
And the MPO?
No, T-Dot and the MPO.
And the MTA?
Yeah.
Thank you. I think Council Lady Blalock came in before we get started, if she would like to address the council or the commission.
I'll wait.
Okay. Jennifer, any items on deferral or withdrawal?
There is one item to be deferred. It's item number one, 2013 SP 036001 Ashton Park. This is a request to rezone from RS 15 to SPR zoning for properties located at 4619 Hesse Road and 3375 Earhart Road, and for a portion of property located at 3391 Earhart Road, to permit up to 155 single-family residential dwelling units. It is staff's recommendation that we defer to the April 24, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. You've heard the request to defer item number one till April 24th meeting is your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. There was a request by one of the commissioners to defer one of the other items. Can, I don't know.
Okay. Stuart?
Mr. Chairman, I would, at the request of Commissioner McQuire, read this into the record at this point because it deals with the deferral request. Dear Chairman McLean, we are going to be out of town this Thursday, the 25th, the day of our meeting. I would very much like to be a part of the discussion about the White's Creek proposal in item number 12, and would like to request that you please defer this item 30 days or 60 days. Another aspect for our discussion is that it would be helpful to have information about exactly where the sewer service to this area stops. Apparently, it takes some time to assemble this data slash map, so a deferral will allow the Water Department time to provide the commission staff with this information. I appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Andre.
Okay. We're going to take those separate, so let's vote on item number one, which is Ashton Park. Been requested to be deferred till April 24th is your motion. Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? That item has now been deferred. The request from Council, Committee McQuire, is that a motion that you're making?
No, not at this time. It was brought up by the commissioner, and it's, I suppose that the time to actually vote on that would be after ascertaining a little bit more about what the applicant and people on both sides of the issue wanted to.
Okay. Think it'd be more appropriate?
I don't think we should foreclose the deferral, though, just because we wouldn't do it at this time.
We'll pick that up after the, after closing of the public hearing. Okay. Items on consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be heard, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following are the items on the consent agenda. Item number two, 2014 Z 002 TX 001, personal instruction in industrial districts. This is a request to amend the zoning code to replace the definition for personal instruction and permit the uses in the IWD, IR, and IG zoning districts. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number four, 2014 Z 006 TX 001, posting of public hearing signs. This is a request to amend the zoning code to modify the general requirements of public notice signs. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number five, 2014 Z 007 TX 001, detached accessory dwelling units. This is a request to amend the zoning code pertaining to the definition and conditions for detached accessory dwelling units. Staff asked me to clarify that this would permit detached accessory dwelling units in adopted urban design overlays where development standards were included in that urban design overlay. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number six, 2014 SP 013 001, Porter Road Place. A request to rezone from R 6 to SPR zoning for properties located at 1421 Porter Road and Porter Road unnumbered, to permit up to six detached dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all the conditions. Item number seven, 2014 Z 014 PR 001. A request to rezone from IR to MUG zoning for a property located at 30 Oldham Street. Staff recommendation is to approve MUG or MUGA. Item number eight, 2014 Z 015 PR 001. A request to rezone from MUNA to RS 10 zoning for properties located at 2212 and 2216 Riverside Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number nine, 2014 UD 001 001, Clayton Avenue UDO. This is a request to apply the Clayton Avenue Urban Design Overlay to various properties located on Clayton Avenue, Craig Avenue, and Leland Lane, zoned R 10, to apply design standards regarding building height, setbacks, frontage, and driveways. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 11, 2014 NL 001 001. A request to apply a neighborhood landmark overlay district to various properties located on the west side of Gallatin Pike between Virginia Avenue and Broadmoor Drive, zoned OR 20A and RS 7.5, and located within the Gallatin Pike Urban Design Overlay District. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 13, 2014 S 024 001, West Nashville, re-subdivision of Lot 2 and portion of abandoned 53rd Avenue North. A request for final plat approval to create three lots on properties located at 5219 Illinois and 5213 Illinois Avenue, zoned R 6. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Under other business, item number 14, a new employee contract for Anna Emerson. Item number 15, approval of amended Planning Commission rules and procedures effective for the March 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. And item 19, acceptance of the director's report and approval of administrative items.
Jennifer, before you read those back, I want to ask the commissioners, the amendment to the Planning Commission rules and procedures was emailed to you. I want to know if everybody has read those to their satisfaction and willing to keep us on consent. Okay. Read those back if you would.
So the items on consent agenda are item number two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 19.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the ones requested be on consent. All in.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Don't mean to be a rabble-rouser, but I've got a couple of questions on a couple of items on consent. Item number four, the posting of public hearing signs. I just wanted to ask a question, how this change will, how the public will be notified about the change, and whether there's going to be sort of a period of time in which the community's going to have to get sort of used to this new approach and that no one's going to be penalized or deferred if, you know, if they're not notified.
Well, this is, it's the change to council public hearing signs will mirror our planning commission signs, so a number of our applicants are used to going out into the field and posting their own signs. We would certainly be clear with our applicants, we draft all of the information to send to them, and then if we don't get the notices and signs in a timely manner, we often call them to remind them, and they need to be doing this by the deadline. So we do have a lot of communication with them already around the notices and signs.
Great. Thank you. And then item number five, thanks for the brief summary on that, but the draft of the detached accessory dwelling unit bill that was on the website was slightly different, and I don't think, I think this now applies to a lot fewer properties, I think, but I would like the, for the public's sake and the commission's sake, for you to explain in a little bit more detail what changed.
Exactly. It's actually two separate bills. The bill before you today is permitting these detached accessory dwelling units only in adopted urban design overlays where development standards were included in the urban design overlay. The other bill that has been on our website is looking at the detached accessory dwelling units more broadly. Right now, we're still in a period where we're getting public input on that, so that bill is not before the commission right now.
This bill is primarily tied to the Clayton Avenue UDO. That's the purpose of this bill that's on this agenda.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll move. We approve consent.
We also need to pull item number seven for a separate vote.
You say pull number seven? Is that we're going to hear it? Is that?
No, no. Separate vote, just separate votes. So the items on this would be items two, four, five, six, eight, nine, 11.
13, 14, 15, and 19 would be voted on one time, then we'll come back to item number seven on consent. We've got a motion second for those items, all in favor? Any opposed? Those have now been approved by consent. Need a motion of second to approve number seven on consent.
So moved?
Is there any comments on that? Motion second to approve number seven separately. All in favor? Any opposed? That has now been approved.
And we note the abstention from the commissioner.
Right. Deny that vote.
So for the sake of the audience, there'd be three items that'll now be heard. Public hearing is item number three, which is the music bill, and the item 10, barbecued it, and number 12 is a Vista Cluster Lot subdivision, in that order.
Item three is a text amendment to the zoning code. The text amendment would apply countywide if approved. It is for small outdoor music events. It defines a small outdoor music event, it means the provisions of music entertainment events outside permanent structures on commercially zoned property located within 1,000 feet of properties zoned to permit residential. It would add this as a new use in the zoning code. This is just a short summary of all the requirements. It require that stages and sound amplification equipment be directed away from residents and located within 300 feet of the event property. Limits maximum noise. Shared with residential property boundaries to 75 decimals. Limits maximum noise shared with residential property boundaries to 75 decimals. It limits the number of events to one per month and no more than eight per year. Limits hours of the events between 11:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. on weekdays and 10, 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on the weekends. Limits maximum duration of any such event to four hours. Requires that event organizers submit a list of dates and times for all events and requires that it be updated yearly. Limits attendance to no more than 150 persons. Requires a traffic and parking management plan. Limits events to sites with access to non-residential collector streets. Prohibits lighting from impacting surrounding residents. And requires notification of any event to all property owners within 600 feet of the event. Before I get into staff's issues with this bill, I do want to point out that Bill Herbert, the zoning administrator, and myself have been working with the Council Lady, and she's aware of some of the technical issues with the, with the bill and will continue to work on this after it's gone through the Planning Commission. Staff concerns, the first big concern is that it's our understanding that this came about to address a specific issue. Typically, it is not wise to draft regulation that would affect the whole county, impact the whole county to address one issue because of unintended consequences. For instance, in this, it requires, this impacts CS, CA, and CF districts. So CS now permits residential. So you could have a property in a strip mall and you want to do one of these events. You're completely surrounded by commercial. You're nowhere near any residential, and you would still have to go through this process just because the CS now permits residential use as an adaptive reuse. We have existing regulations on the board that regulate lighting, noise. Section, or Title 11 regulates noise along all zoning districts and property boundaries and says that you basically can't have audible, clearly audible. So if you can hear someone clearly and you know what they're saying across a property boundary, then you would be out of compliance with, with that law. And the zoning code limits you to 60 decimals at the property boundary. The proposed bill is actually, is less restrictive than both of those regulations. It provides limited protection, so we've only picked out CS, CA, and CF. So any other district, if you're residential property near a mixed-use district or any other district, you don't provide, you're not provided the same protections that this bill is intended to provide for persons next to the other districts. You would also still be able to have these type of events in residential districts. So if you had an event next to a CS district that was limited by this bill, you could have it at your home, something similar, as long as you're within the current noise regulations. I also want to point out that there's very little CF left in Davidson County. All of it's fragmented around downtown and midtown, and that the only CA district is Opry Mill Mall and, and that area around Opry Mill Mall. So that's the only, only CA in the county. We find that it's unreasonable for many reasons. First, it, it limits the type of events that Nashville is known for. It requires that you have to plan for these events a year ahead of time. Most of the time when shows are, come about, they're usually not planned that far ahead. A lot of times, I think an example, a lot of these events will occur due to a, in response to a natural disaster or some under other unfortunate circumstance. I think after the flood in 2010, you saw events like this popping up everywhere to, to booster money and help the community. You also see these things pop up for, someone at a business may have, someone has cancer or something like this, and they throw a benefit show just to help that. So it'd be really difficult to do that if you have to plan it a year ahead of time. It also, also limits the number to four, I can't remember. It limits the number you can have in a month and the number you can have in a year, which again, a lot of people, especially musicians, depend on having these events to live. And so that would make it more difficult for musicians and other performers. And that would also, just from the fact that they have to be planned well ahead of time, that a performer may not be available and then pops up at a point and they wouldn't be able to have that person perform. There is, again, unintended consequences, which you talked about before, like the CS district. And so with, with that, staff is recommending that the bill be disapproved.
Thank you. Before I call on the Council Lady to speak, understand the monitors in the back of the room are not working. If there's anyone that'd like to move up closer to the front where you can see, please do that at this time. Council Lady Allen.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Despite the, the recommendation for disapproval, I would like to ask for your support for the substitute bill, 2014651, which would regulate small outdoor music events. I've worked some with planning and will continue to work with them and with codes to see if we can iron out some of the unintended consequences that they are concerned about. And I think a number of them are not necessarily as they see those, and I would like to try to explain that to you now. The goal of this bill is to create an opportunity for outdoor music events in certain commercial areas where they are not currently possible. It does not affect the downtown code area or the Gulch or any events which are already permitted by Metro Parks, like Live on the Green or the concerts that we had after the flood on public properties. It does not affect street parties that are permitted by Public Works as they set up a street closing. So many of the types of events that people were concerned about are specifically not dealt with in this bill, and this bill states that. I agree with staff's statement that making it more difficult to hold outdoor music events is against Nashville's culture. We are Music City, and we should be able to make music in many places throughout the city. But our current noise ordinance, which I've passed out excerpts from, actually makes such events illegal in many of the small commercial areas where most of the vibrant activity is happening. Hopefully, at least eight of you have copies of the excerpts from the Metro Code. Section 1112070, the excessive noise ordinance, states in paragraph A that it is unlawful to operate any sound amplification equipment so as to create sounds that are plainly audible from the boundary line of the nearest residentially occupied property. So currently, you cannot have a music event with amplified music in any residential property unless your property is so big that you're far enough away that they can't hear you. And if you are, then these regulations wouldn't apply anyway. Paragraph E of this same section prohibits anyone owning a facility within 50 feet of a residence from having amplified music unless it is within a totally enclosed structure between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Between 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., the enclosure is not required, but the property is still subject to the requirement that the music not be audible at the nearest residential property line. I think that's pretty darn restrictive. And in section 172890, the maximum permitted sound levels, which we referred to earlier, that are allowed across lot lines or district boundaries are 65 decibels between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and 60 decibels between 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That's about the level of conversation. But again, if the lot line under discussion is a residential property line, the standard is still not audible, which is considerably less than 60 decibels. So that's the standard that everything is held to at this point. So these regulations currently that we have provide very good protection of our homes with regard to amplified music from commercial establishments. And there is value to having that as a base standard. I think people appreciate peace and quiet in their homes. However, as we have talked about, this is a vibrant city where Music City, there are times when it may be appropriate to have a music event in a commercial area that happens also to be near to neighborhoods. If that is going to happen, we need to have some protection so that that can be done in a controlled manner, I think. So this proposed ordinance would create a permit process that would allow a limited number of outdoor music events in the areas that are currently prohibited from that because their events would be plainly audible at the nearest residential property line. The examples would be like Hillsborough Village, 12 South, Sylvan Park, Hip Donelson. I've got some other examples. Let's see, Elliston Place, Jefferson Street, Germantown, East Nashville. I don't think it's a, it's a single problem. I think there are lots of areas around town where we've got vibrant, growing commercial areas that are very close to residential. And we don't need to have loud music there every night, seven days a week, all year long, but there are, there are certainly wonderful community events, and you'll hear about one of them, that people have valued and are part of what our culture is. I would like to make those possible. The current noise ordinance was put in place so that residents have some certainty that they will not have loud music adjacent to their property on a continuing basis. But I think that sometimes we need to do this. This ordinance creates a permit process where neighbors would be notified of an outdoor music event, knowing it would end by a reasonable hour and that it would happen a limited number of times per year, and that some planning would be given to traffic and parking. The alternative is to consider without a permit process and to exclude a number of commercial areas from the possibility of participating in what makes Nashville Music City. The current version of this bill was arrived at with input from Metro Public Works, codes, police, neighborhood representatives, small business owners, and music industry personnel. It's been run past and mentioned in Visitors Bureau. I continue to get input, and I'm planning on an amendment, and will be happy to work with whatever comments y'all have as well to do that. This bill allows codes to issue a permit through their existing process. Metro Police are already the enforcers of the existing Norris ordinance, and this gives them a clear guideline to go by, just as they now have if someone says the music in the park is too loud, if the people at the park have an amplification permit, the police know how to deal with that. This would simply give a permit process to private property that doesn't currently exist. The goal is not to make it harder to make music in this city, but to open up the possibility in smaller commercial areas that are currently limited because of their proximity to residential areas. But that possibility needs to be balanced with reasonable protections for the residents. I believe this bill does that, or it's close enough that we can work with the final technical things that we need to do, and I'm willing to do that. And I think we can make it easier, not harder, to have music in Music City. Thank you for your time, and I ask for your support.
Thank you. Other members in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the Council Lady?
My name's Erin McAnally, and I am here representing this specific issue that unearthed this, this citywide issue. This is a problem that's very near and dear to our businesses' heart and our communities' as well. Starting in the summer of 2009, our business, I'm Regina Willey, located in the 12 South District, conducted a small monthly event in our backyard called Supper and Song. During the summer months, members of the community would come by our shop with their children, friends, and family in the early evening to enjoy acoustic music and food with us. It was held from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. With the utmost respect for low levels of amplification, and it was conducted in an orderly manner. In late summer of 2012, members of Metro Police arrived to tell us the news that we were being asked to discontinue the event due to neighbors complaining. We complied immediately. Upon the announcement from our business that we were complying, we received an overwhelming amount of support, including hundreds of emails and letters, not only to us, but also to the council members and to Mayor Dean's office. At this point, the issue has unearthed us and to the community that there's seemingly no recourse to conduct small music events on commercial property in Music City. There are, however, provisions for such events in cities such as Austin, Portland, Lincoln, Nebraska, and Norman, Oklahoma. So we support Councilwoman's ordinance as a way to solve this citywide issue. And I've brought these other ordinances if anyone would like to see them. There are quite a few. Anyone?
Just give them to the staff. Give them to the staff behind the mountain.
I also have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is a motion to close a public hearing. Motion second, close a public hearing. All in favor? Stuart?
I'd like to make the obvious question is, Council Lady Allen is referring to Hip Donelson. Why is she not referring to Hip, Belmont Hillsborough? That is my question. Sorry, that was a little effort and levity. Obviously, we have a situation here because it sounds like both the staff analysis and Council Lady Allen have been concerned with not, with making it less restrictive for small-scale music events. And there's a very different point of view from the staff analysis to what Council Lady Allen is suggesting, and I don't quite, quite have it all in my head yet. I think those neighborhoods that have been mentioned really do value the fact that they're mixed-use and that it's possible to have unusual events within reason. And was really surprised when I sort of got into this and realized what had happened in 12 South. You know, it's, so I'm, I'm trying to get a sense, I guess I need to ask staff a little bit more about this. The analysis seems to indicate that this is making it too hard for music to happen, and yet we're, we have instances where, where very strict and overly strict regulations seem to be in place or lack of, lack of regulations. Can you help us figure this out?
Well, what I've heard, what, I've heard that the biggest thing, problem is enforcement of, of the noise ordinance that we have today. And we have both of these, we have current ordinances in place, but there's just a lack of enforcement. A lot of these events would happen after, can you not hear me? A lot of these events will happen after hours, so when Metro employees will be gone, so there will not be zoning examiners or codes guys going around and checking these things after, during the night or on the weekend when they're, where they're here. So for codes, it'll be all hearsay, so they can't really issue a citation by going out there the next day and saying.
Is that the problem we're trying to get at here? I thought the problem we were trying to get at is to allow reasonable musical expression in close to neighborhoods. I thought it was the other side of the issue.
What, no, I think that's one of our, our concerns, is that it's going to make it more limited and make it more difficult because you have to go through this process. And again, you have to have, you can only have so many a year.
And now you have no process to go through.
So you just have them.
Illegally.
Well, if you meet the sound, you can have an event and meet the sound requirements. There was ordinance.
Uh huh.
I don't think, I don't think you don't build a.
You can have a musical event that, that could not be heard at the property line. I guess you could, but, but I think the point is, do we not want to expand that a little bit?
Yeah. And I, I don't really know the difference between 75 decibels and 60 decibels, what it would sound like. But I have a feeling it's probably not that big of a difference in that most music events will still be in violation of that rule. So, you know, that's probably something that needs to be looked at as well.
So you're thinking even if we pass that, there'd be other, you think they still wouldn't be able to do this very, very much?
That's, that's my opinion.
Legally.
Nor do I think it'll be enforced.
I'd like to hear what other people say. This is a big issue in the parts of town, part of town I live in, and it's all on the side of wanting to make it more flexible.
Hunter? Yeah, I agree. I'm a little bit confused, and I think we all agree that we'd like to have reasonable opportunities for people to have, hold events in these areas. So, but I'm not sure this, the bill as it's written currently is the right answer, or at least I'm not sure I'm prepared today to, to vote for it based on staff's analysis. Understand staff's working with the Council Lady, but I'm not sure where we start as far as all the concerns that were, that were raised. To come up with any suggestions that would, that would change my perspective today, perhaps. But, so again, I'll hear what the other Commissioners have to say, but it seems like there's too many issues with the way the bill's written now. Seems like it's, there's a good intent here, but maybe we're just not there yet, and maybe a deferral would help clear some of this up.
Lea?
I have a question for staff. There is.
There is some mention about discussions with the council lady about how to fix the bill and things that were maybe wrong with it from staff's perspective, and maybe those discussions are still ongoing. Can we talk about what the staff has discussed with the council lady about the bill?
Well, we, we've talked about numerous, there was actually, this is a substitute bill, so there's a bill previously that we had some issues, and she fixed a lot of the, some of the technical problems with that, and it came with the substitute. So, some of those, again, were like dealing with the unintended consequences that, the way it's written is that if you have a property, because it says properties that permit residential. So, if you have a CS now permits residential, so if you have a shop in the middle of a big commercial strip, you would still be required to do that. So, I think one of the things we talked about was, instead of saying zoning that permits residential use, using a residential zoning district, so the RRS zoning district, so that would take care of that issue. From an enforcement standpoint, it creates a situation where the zoning administrator has the ability to revoke a permit. How he does that, or what, what the guidance is for him to do that, will be, it'll be difficult, because, you know, you could get, you're never going to make everybody happy, so you're going to always have somebody complain. And so, I would be a difficult position to be in, to not really know what was going on because you weren't at the event, and then have someone complain, and then have to revoke it. If your permit is revoked, you can't get another permit for a year. So, that was another thing we saw as unreasonable, is the fact that, so someone, if, if your permit does get revoked, then it's a long time before you can hold another event, when there may not have really been an issue, or it could be something that could be corrected easily, like in the example here, that started it all, the, the business ceased and actually was able to get the community to support. Well, if you can't get a permit for a year, you won't have that ability to do that for a long period of time. So, those were some of the things we talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Will?
Well, I think there's some good information and good intentions here, and I just don't feel like we're prepared tonight to make a decision, so I, I would add a request to defer.
Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm the same, you know, I understand the nature of this particular request, and I think it could be good. However, I'm still stuck on staff concern number one. I've always been a big advocate of wondering why if we have a wreck on Harding Road, we put up two more traffic lights on Dickerson Road. And I just don't see how that equates when we're talking about counter, counterline regulations. So, I'm going to listen to, for a little bit more, but I understand what the council lady is trying to accomplish, wish her well, but I'm going to forego any comments until we get a little bit more understanding on how this is going to work. Thank you.
Jeff?
From a practical perspective for the business owner, are you back playing music without a change in the amendment? Where's the lady that came up and spoke? Are you back playing music?
No.
You're not?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Since December 2004.
Thank you.
Derek?
I am, I, I feel the same way that some of the other commissioners feel right now. I do believe that this is a step in the right direction, but I don't think we're fully there. I believe that further work between the council lady and staff will probably get us to where we need to be, but as of this point in time, I'm for a deferral as well.
Greg?
Well, I look at this, and I agree that we're not ready, and we'll support a deferral. Some of the just very brief things that I think are very restrictive in this is under D5, parking. There has to be adequate off-street parking, and that you have to get with the chief traffic engineer. Item 7, Traffic and Parking Management Plan. Notification under 9 seems expensive and very restrictive. These are the things that I could not support just looking at the bill in general. I, I want to make sure that, and I have another question for the young lady that testified. What specifically did they say why you can't play music? What, what did the police officer say?
That there was a neighborhood complaint, and that I believe that...
Was it the, the noise here? Can you come up for a second, please, so everybody can hear you? These are just some of the questions that seem kind of weird.
I believe, my comment, Ellen, it was Sandra Moore reported.
It was actually from District.
Right. So, Sandra Moore from the 12 South District reported a neighborhood complaint, and that was, the cops came days after our last event and asked us to shut it down.
Did they say it was a zoning violation, or was it a decimal issue?
I don't remember. Yeah, it was unclear. It was just, we were just asked to cease.
Okay. All right. Well, those are some of the issues that I have. I definitely don't want, we are Music City, I don't want to restrict. I mean, these, the music that you were playing seems real fun and nice, and we obviously don't want to restrict that, and I think potentially with the council lady, I, I think the balance is off, though. I think that it's, this is much more restrictive in my mind. I think that there could be a way to fix this, and I, I know the council lady will work on that, so that's, that's my opinion, and I'll, if, I'll move the deferral one meeting, or is that, or what do you all want to do, Mr. Chairman?
How much time?
Is that enough time? I, that may not, how about two meetings? That may be a little better. How about, I'll make a deferral to, to move at two meetings.
Second. Okay, got a motion second to defer to what up here?
Two meetings.
Two meetings? Okay. Hunter?
There's a bill filed, is that, is that impacted by, or do you want to deferral?
She can defer that.
There is a bill filed, but, I mean, yeah. I'd have to go back and look at the timing. I might recall what the timing was on the bill.
Text changes? Can I make one comment? Come to the microphone, I'll hear you.
Thank you.
My name's Eric Tarleton, I live out in the Whites Creek area, near Fontanelle, and the Metro Police, it's all up to their discretion if it's too loud. They do not carry sound pressure meters. They have no idea how loud it is. They have nothing that tells them, and the Fontanelle basically points right at my house, and I'm about a half a mile away. And they, like I said, they have no, they have nothing to go by as to what's too loud. And so, that's my, that's my comment.
Good information. Thanks. Stuart?
So, so the legal status of the bill being filed, what, what is the impact to this on when it's deemed to be approved? Or is that just for zoning changes and not, is that just for particular parcels and not text changes?
Typically, we do see those on individualized parcels, but I would know if it, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of council rules with me today, but typically, I think council rules require some action.
They've said it applies to text amendments as well.
Okay.
The ones that are coming forward to council, you know?
They wouldn't be able to hear it on second reading without, is that right? Don't you?
Yes, it's the council rules that would cause it to be deferred until a recommendation from the commission came to the council. So, even if it went beyond the 60-day period, council rules are that they won't hear it until they've received a recommendation from the commission. Now, it's the council rules, so the council can, can set aside that rule. But I would just tell you procedurally, that's why it probably wouldn't move forward at the council.
So, well, that's one of my questions left. I'm sorry, I'll leave you to it. So, the posture of the bill is that we have a situation where the activities that we all like are being prohibited, and yet the bill is seen as too punitive for us to change it, even though it's a step in the right direction. Not exactly where I am on the issue, but, and seems counterintuitive. So, I'll vote against the deferral, but hope we can continue to work since it's probably going to pass.
We got a motion second to defer two meetings, all in favor? Any opposed?
I oppose.
But we're not, we're not opposed. Now, ready for item number 10, which is a barbecuty. Listen, you've only got one item tonight, you had about 10 last meeting, so take your rest tonight.
Okay. Well, I don't know. It's a barbecue, barbecue, barbecue. All right, so then, next item on the agenda is item 10 for the, the barbecuty pud. The request here is to cancel the, the barbecuty commercial planned unit development overlay located on property at 5207 Nolansville Pike. Staff recommends disapproval of the PUD cancellation, but approval of a PUD amendment to allow all uses permitted in commercial service with certain exceptions. The current zoning on the property is CS with a commercial pud overlay. Surrounding zoning is CS, CL, RM9, R6, and R10. The policy here is community center, which encourages mixed-use zoning districts and design principles that enhance the pedestrian landscape. The base zone of the property is CS, but the property is also subject to a PUD overlay that was approved in 1975, and that limits the uses on the property to restaurant. Community center policy does not support all of the uses that are permitted in the CS zoning district. Staff's recommendation is to disapprove canceling the pud, but to approve amending the pud to allow all CS uses except those that are listed here, which are not supported by the community center policy. In conclusion, staff recommends to disapprove the, the pud cancellation, but to approve a pud amendment to allow all uses permitted in commercial service with certain exceptions. Thank you.
Could you go back to that list a second?
Absolutely.
The, the issue is really, do you allow these uses or not? That's the difference between what the application is and what the staff recommendation is. The applicant would like to include these uses, and the staff recommendation is to not allow these uses.
And leave that up on the, if you will. So, item is open for public hearing, the applicant be allowed 10 minutes.
CS.
The applicant here, their representative.
Just about everybody.
You'll be allowed 10 minutes, and you can keep two of that back for rebuttal if you like.
I won't be that long.
Please give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Ronnie McFarland. I'm the owner of the property in question. I also operate the barbecuty restaurant on the south end of the property. There's a large building, 12,000 square foot building on the northern side of the property that has been a restaurant for many years. The building has been vacant for about a year now. Been trying to market the building with that much success. You know, a vacant building's not good for me, but it's not, also not good for the community. I was here about three years ago to amend the pud, to allow me to add on to the barbecuty restaurant on the south end of the property, and I got that done. And there's, there's some items on here, there's a lot of items listed on here that the, the committee thinks we shouldn't be allowed to do, but I also know I don't want a car wa, a car lot, because right across the street, there's like four car lots directly across the street from this property now. And to my understanding, underneath CS zoning, a car lot cannot be put on that property anyhow. I think there's some kind of new law about a thousand-foot distance between car lots on Nolansville Road. Back when the pud was put on the property, most of the buildings on Nolansville Road were actually residential homes. And if you can look, see now, most of those residential homes have turned into car lots, which is not good. We just want an opportunity to market the property, get somebody in there, you know, supply and demand takes care of what goes into a property. The neighborhood has changed quite a bit. We just want an opportunity to market and put something in there that will work. I own the barbecuty on the other end of the property. We can always be neighbors of whatever's in there. Don't want anything detrimental to the community. I've always been a good steward to the community, and, and that's just what we're asking for, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support of this gentleman? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the time with you today. My name is John Parker, and I'm a commercial broker, have been handling the property for Ronnie and his family about a year now. He didn't explain this, but we had, originally, the tenant was in on a long-term lease that he had and had been in there for years, and the tenant stopped paying rent, so Ronnie let him out, and we started right in trying to prospect restaurants and any interested parties. And it was at that time that, when we got someone very interested in buying it, that we discovered that the pud was in place. And, you know, the neighborhood has been in transition, and I've tried to get any national credit name and anything that would make use of this restaurant building. The problem is that it's not overly functional as it sits. The kitchen is downstairs, and it was due to a lot of work that the former tenant put in, and it's extremely costly to undo that work, and it has been almost impossible to find a qualified restaurant user who could take and would take the building and use it in its current form. So, the biggest goal I've had is to just try to deliver something for my client. We had an appraisal done that was also before the pud was discovered, and, and when I called the appraiser back and asked him if he can do one if the pud were still in place, he said, "I will, but let's see how this ends up, because it's not going to be worth nearly what it would be if it did not have the pud in place." So, I was just here to speak to the idea that I have interested parties, many of those, one particular wants to buy the property, wants to be able to lease out to various uses, you know, that, that, and, and he seems okay with excluding certain uses, but he entered into a price before he knew he was limited by what he can do. It probably kills that deal, but more importantly, we're just trying to get the best advantage we can to make something happen that's quality and an improvement for the neighborhood than of the vacant building. I appreciate your time very much, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Wesley Cothran, and I live at 401 Larkway Court. Excuse me, I had a little bit of cold. But my lot backs up right up to this lot, and I just think that with some of the new CS uses that could come in here, I don't, I don't really see how the vacant building has affected our property values as much. I've seen online where we're doing just, just fine. And I know that I could speak for a lot of my neighbors that I have spoken with in the last 30 minutes when just finding out about this, that they would be, be against it. So, just opening up the options for, you know, a bunch of businesses that we, you know, would not, would not like up there, I, that we definitely oppose it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, yes, sorry?
I just want to say that I'm Council Lady Blalock, and I represent this district, and this zoning is, was put on by the owner's father back in the 70s, when things were a lot different back then, and basically, he's the owner, and he just wants it removed. So, it was put on by them, the family, and the family wants it removed. So, I think the majority of the neighborhood is not going to want some of these items, but office uses is probably what this building is going to be used best for. So, I am in support of, of potential amending the pud. I would like to see it removed if the neighborhood is interested in that. So, what I am doing is, in two weeks, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting and, you know, see who else is interested in coming out and sharing their stories. I only had a few people against it, had several for it, so that's why we're going to have a neighborhood meeting in a couple of weeks to just kind of clarify this. So, just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you. Advocate does have two minutes for rebuttal if he'd like to come back and speak. The applicant does have two minutes for rebuttal if he'd like to come back and speak. Okay. Under the new regulations that we passed earlier on consent, and I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, I have that authority now to do that, so public hearing is closed. Greg.
On the amendment, I had a question about the office uses. Why is that on there? Just to promote retail.
In the zoning code, if you look under the category for all of the uses that are permitted under the office category, there are certain office uses that are not supported by the community center policy. So I don't think we're talking mainly about like a general, you know, business office, but there are other types of office uses that are not supported by the policy.
Like what?
Such as title loan, check cashing, cash advance. Those sorts of uses all fall under the office use category.
And we can't make a distinction for those, different types?
I would defer.
You could with the SP?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think the amendment's fine, except for the business office uses, you know, regular business office uses, not check cashing.
That's something we wrestled with as well.
Okay.
Derek?
I'm in agreement with Greg on this. I do believe that if we could separate the office uses and maybe through the SP that was just spoken about, and maybe get some of the title loan places out of there, then that would be great. But beyond that, I am in support of staff recommendations, but I would like to see us do something a little different on the office uses.
Jeff? A question for Mr. Parker. Are there other exclusions, exceptions on this that the applicant opposes and would like removed besides the office use?
You know, I've asked the group. We had the property under contract with this group before the PUD, and when they discovered it, the guy said, "Hey, you know, I don't know what all I want to lease to," but I told him I would call him after this to see if he still got an interest. But I felt like the best case was going to be an amendment of some sort, and so I'm trying to confirm that as well, sir.
Thank you. That's all.
Stuart?
I always try to agree with Commissioner Atkins, so I think he's...
Is that all you've got to say? Robert?
Yeah, I guess it's hard to start eliminating some of these off the list. We don't know specifically what the applicant would like to include. Though, you know, some of these uses are more impactful on the adjacent neighborhoods perhaps than others. You know, the office uses seems like a... I'm not sure why. Maybe that's something we ought to look at is why office... You know, some of those uses are all under office category. But self-service storage, I'm not sure if that would have a negative impact necessarily on the neighborhood. You know, pawn shop and liquor sales, you know, we need those, and they're essentially retail, you know. I know they're... So I'm surprised that those don't fall or wouldn't be considered... Are all of these uses not consistent with the community center?
Correct. One thing that I was going to suggest is that within office uses, we have a category that's listed as general office, which is separate from cash advance, check cashing, financial institution, title loan. You could include... You could exclude those and still leave in general office and leasing and sales office if those were the types of uses that the applicant might think is what their intended use of that property is. So you can be more specific in exactly what office uses you would leave as excluded on the list and still leave in general office and leasing and sales offices, but taking out title loan, check cashing, cash advance, and financial institutions, which I think would still match with the policy.
Well, I hesitate to just start eliminating things off the list without knowing what the applicant may want to do. It seems reasonable that an office use isn't going to have a negative... General office use isn't going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood, so I'd be open to making that clarification to this. But there may be other uses that, you know, wouldn't necessarily have a negative impact on the neighborhood as well. So I'll hear what the other commissioners have to say.
There you go.
I think I'm where the other commissioners are. Disapproval of the PUD cancellation seems appropriate, and it would be appropriate, I think, to amend the PUD, but we don't really know right now what all the amendments should have.
Philip?
Well, I guess my question is legally, if we can amend this tonight, or would it be better to defer it for one meeting and come back with a very clear assessment of what should be and should not be included? This list up here looks like a long, long list, and...
Should we ask the owner? I mean, what his intended use is, or if he even thinks that...
Good. Come on up.
Sorry to interrupt. Sorry.
Thank you. If we can re-eliminate the check cashing and the cash advance and move forward with this, is this something that we can do? That seems to be the biggest objection. You can't put a car lot there, and we don't want a car lot there. We do want the opportunity. I don't understand why a liquor store would... I mean, I don't drink, but I don't see why a liquor store is detrimental because they're all over town. If it's legal to put it there, can we do that? That's my question.
Did I answer the question? I think we got some up and down theories here. I'm going to support the staff after that comment. I'm lost now.
Here's our motion.
Make more clear. Follow the staff every day.
Give me a second. Motion second to follow staff recommendation.
I'd like at least to suggest an amendment to the motion that's appropriate to allow... To modify the last bullet point. I don't know how to modify it, but essentially to allow general office.
Okay. I think what you're saying is that you would modify the last bullet point to state that instead of stating all office uses, that it would simply, in its place, put cash advance, cash checking, financial institution, and title loans, but to allow general office and sales and leasing office.
I believe that's correct, but a quick question just to clarify. The general office would be appropriate within this policy?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. It's the other office uses that are not considered appropriate in this policy. So yes, that would be my suggestion or motion to amend.
The maker of the motion has heard that amendment. Are you willing to accept that?
I accept that.
When it made the second. Okay. The motion now has been amended, and it's okay with the maker and the second person. I'd like clarification on that to be read in the record, though.
The motion on the floor is to approve staff recommendation with the amendment that would allow as permitted uses offices. We're going to do this as a team.
General office, sales and leasing office, but prohibit cash advance, cash checking, financial institution, and title loans.
And that takes place of the last bullet point that says all office uses. All above that stays the same?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay. You've heard the motion. You've heard the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Now ready for item number 12.
Mr. Chairman, this is item number 12 on your agenda. This is a request for a cluster lot subdivision to create 43 clustered residential lots on 11.18 acres of property located at the northeast corner of Whites Creek Pike and Green Lane. The site is located just north of the intersection of Whites Creek Pike and Briley Parkway, also west of the Interstate 24. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The current zoning on the property is R10. That's a one- and two-family residential zoning that permits lot sizes minimum of 10,000 square feet. If you'll note, on this map, this site is surrounded by areas that are also zoned R10. There are parcels in the surrounding area as well as subdivisions in the surrounding area. It's also important to note that the site sits across Green Lane from a portion of the intersection that's zoned CL, commercial, at the southeast corner of Green Lane and Whites Creek Pike. That property is part of a plan, commercial node, per the community plan that's centered around Whites Creek Pike and Briley Parkway intersection. Here's a copy of the proposed subdivision. This is the cluster lot option provided by the zoning code provides for flexibility of design for residential development of larger tracts of land with the intent to create common open space, preserve natural features, or significant vegetation. This proposed cluster lot subdivision meets all of the cluster lot provisions of the zoning code. The subdivision proposes, as I said earlier, 43 residential lots. It preserves and provides well over the minimum required 15% of open space. The applicant is additionally committed to preserving all of the existing tree coverage in proposed open space B, which is on the north side of the proposed subdivision. Included in this subdivision and required by the cluster lot option is a recreational space also located toward the north of the subdivision. Lots proposed front Green Lane as well as the internal... Proposed internal streets. There are two lots that are proposed to front Whites Creek Pike. Those two lots will be restricted to one access point on Whites Creek Pike. The proposed subdivision also plans for stubs at the northeast... I'm sorry, the northwest edge of the subdivision as well as the eastern edge of the subdivision to provide for future connectivity. The subdivision presented to you meets all of the minimum requirements for the cluster lot option for properties in the R10 zoning district. And with that in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with condition, as again, the subdivision's consistent with the cluster lot provisions and the subdivision regulations.
Thank you, Wayne. This item will be open for public hearing, and we make the statement that this subdivision can and is by the zoning allows this subdivision. So anyone that speaks, if you want to be redundant of what we've already been presented, just keep that in mind. If we become redundant of the same thing, then I'm going to cut off the public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes. You can keep two minutes back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, before I begin, I'd like to have some exhibits about the commissioners.
I represent the applicant in this case. I'm requesting the two minutes for rebuttal, as you have commented about, along with Joe Epps, the engineer, who represent the applicant in this case. I want to start at the front end by making the comment. The history here is that my client came forward in the summer of last year, 2013. They wanted to do a straight subdivision on this piece of property. They had not done a cluster lot development before in Davidson County, and Joe Epps and I both encouraged them to look at that for some of the reasons that you heard the staff mention today. We'll cover those in a short time, but it's very obvious why a cluster lot is preferable on this piece of property. With that said, I wanted my client to introduce and meet the councilman in the area so that he could see the type of housing which they would build on the property. On July 10 of last year, 2013, Councilman Hunt went to Murfreesboro, met my client, looked at all of their developments there, and that was followed by approximately three meetings in Davidson County where my clients met with the councilman, drove the neighborhood. Each of these meetings were generally at least half a day in time as they drove through all the different neighborhoods in that area. As commented by the staff, we're surrounded by the R10. I want to make the comment also, for all business people here, always looking for certainty, this property's been zoned R10 since at least 1973. My client has that interest when they acquired the property. With respect to one issue that was discussed earlier about deferral, it had to do with whether or not there was water and sewer availability. It's not only available, as the staff can confirm here, my clients paid for it. We've got the capacity for water and sewer both. There's manholes out there that we would tie into on the property. With respect to the proposal, if you can look at the exhibits that have been handed out, if you look at exhibit number one, exhibit number one is basically what can be done as a straight subdivision. We originally had a slightly bigger piece of property, so it basically allowed, at that time, under a straight lot subdivision, a total of what the staff now says is 47 units, of which four can be duplexes. That's a straight subdivision. You come in, you pull a permit, you do it. The product you have is what's in front of you. There are four duplexes. There are basically very little open space, et cetera. That can be done unequivocally as a matter of right. After the councilman met with our clients and our client learned more about the cluster lot option, they discussed that they wanted to pursue it. The councilman strongly encouraged them to consider the cluster lot option for the reasons that are obvious in front of you. Once that took place in November of last year, my client sent two proposals through their engineer down here to planning. They were the straight lot subdivision and they were the cluster lot subdivision, asking the staff for their input. It was very obvious to the staff that the cluster lot subdivision was a better proposal. They referenced that back to my client. With that said, my client pursued this matter, and we're now here today. Now, if you look at exhibit number two, exhibit number two is the development proposed as a cluster lot subdivision. Juxtapose that to the straight subdivision. On the cluster lot subdivision, there are 43 lots, a lesser number of lots. There are no duplexes on it. In addition, there is significant green space. 15% is required. We have 26% on the plan. In addition to that, you've got a sensitivity to the slopes and the vegetation on the area, the very things that are suggested under the cluster lot subdivision guidelines. In addition to that, I make the comment that as a result of sensitivity to the topographical and natural features, the development was moved south. You can see that where that 26% of open space is up on the north side and then down there on the bottom corner. Now, I'll reference as well exhibit number three, which has been handed to all of you. Exhibit number three is the zoning ordinance with respect to a cluster lot option. It's very clear, in order to provide for flexibility of design, the creation of common open space, the preservation of natural features for unique or significant vegetation, subdivisions in the R and RS may cluster lots subject to the following restrictions. Staff will confirm we meet all the subdivision regulations. My comment to you is that as a matter of a straight subdivision, it would clearly be approved without any issues, just pull a permit. This planning commission has got total authority over subdivision. That's why this proposal is here before you. In my opinion, it's also a matter of right. If you come in with a cluster lot subdivision, you meet the zoning, you meet all the requirements, basically, you're allowed the permit. That's where we are. That's a decision by the planning commission. There's a great deal of confusion about, does this go to the Metro Council? It does not go to the Metro Council. It is decided here by the planning commission. In my opinion, there's a matter of right to the cluster lot development. There's a matter of right on the straight subdivision. My client, for all the right reasons that I've mentioned to you, strongly wants to do the cluster lot option. It's exactly tailor-made for what's here in the zoning ordinance. Now, with that said, I respectfully ask you to consider the approval today. On the deferral issue, as I said, as mentioned, it's not just that it's there and available, the manholes are in the street. We've paid for the capacity. We've got them paid for and assigned us. Thank you for your courtesies. I'll save my two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the applicant?
Is that all the applicant's presentation?
Yes, I think so.
Is it part of the presentation?
Okay.
Are y'all through then?
They're through. Y'all are through?
With that 10-minute clock. I've got my rebuttal, and these other folks...
There's no one else speaking within your 10-minute timeframe?
That's right.
Okay. Y'all worked that out now?
Yes, sir.
You've got two minutes. I just want to know why I had to leave before you built this.
Hello, my name is James Lawson. I reside at 3969 Lloyd Road in wonderful Whites Creek. We have had quite a bit of discussion about this particular proposal and development. And I have wrestled with it, as I have probably indicated to some, and have not slept much over the last two days, looking at this proposal and thinking like the rest of the residents do, that we would like something a little different than this subdivision. And you'll hear from those who are not in favor of this at all. But I kind of looked at it and I said, well, what is appropriate in that area? What does this do to the area? I drove it, I looked at it, I looked at the, the community, and I thought about also that R-10 that's staring us in the face and what can be done under R-10 without any kind of rebuttal or opportunity to inhibit that. I think that, and you're here a lot of opposition to what I'm going to say, but I, I've come to the conclusion that for this neighborhood, this definitely is a step up. It may not be the exact kind of subdivision that we want, but it's also interesting that there are other subdivisions like this down the street from it, there's one. And, you know, I'm going, I said, well, you know, this is an improvement over that one. I think it would do well for the, the neighborhood. Y'all got flashing lights now, right? Okay. And I'm going to leave it at that point. I, I think this is, is up, is a move up from that community. We'll be back though, with other challenges.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak and support?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Roy Dale. I'm an engineer in Nashville. I actually represent the subdivision that was to the north of this. It too was a zone residential. It too was presented before this commission, and it too met the perfunctory requirements of the subdivision. And you recommended approval, like you should. But I'm also here in support of Councilmember Hunt. When my client decided to do a subdivision there, Councilmember Hunt did much like he has done with this applicant, and has actually required them, asked him, let's say, asked them to go the extra mile. As a result of that, this applicant has agreed to certain requirements that were, that are not required through the subdivision process itself. And that's a compliment to Councilmember Hunt, and it's a, it's a compliment to Old South who's going to be building here. He looks out very well for his community, and he has indicated that and shown that in the way he's handled this. So again, back to this application, it certainly meets the perfunctory requirements of the subdivision. I think you're bound to look at that and take that into consideration. All the departments, as I understand, have signed off on this, thus a recommendation of approval. And I would simply ask for you to endorse that, the staff's recommendation, and approve this based upon the perfunctory requirements. And also taking into consideration, which you probably shouldn't take, is that Councilmember Hunt has required this developer to do things that he's not normally required to do through the subdivision process. Thank you.
Others wishing to speak in support?
Good evening. My name is James Hester. I live in a Dear Meadow subdivision. I've been living there for 28 years. I'm a property owner and I pay property taxes. So this is considered here, first of all, I would recommend it, the lots be at least $200,000, home, at least $200,000. And first of all, need to consider that, you know, what's brought up about how the, the businesses around that center. You have UPS, you have FedEx Ground. The traffic is really tough there in...
Go ahead, go ahead.
The traffic is really tough there in the morning and the afternoon. You have a situation which you have schools, you have KIP Academy that's there also. I recommend you consider a traffic like at Whites Creek Pike and Green Lane for this development. You bring in 43 lots, you bring in families and stuff like that. You consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in support? If you'd line up at the microphone, save some time for the commissioners later on so we get out of here early.
My name is Larry Leighton. I live at 6951 Old Hickory Boulevard in Whites Creek. And I applaud what Commissioner Hunt, or what Congressman Hunt, Councilman Hunt, excuse me, has, what, what he has done, okay? He's, he's, he's put an option in, in front of this committee that didn't have to be here. And I, I would hate for the property developer to go off and do what he has the right to do. And I appreciate the fact that we have an option. I also appreciate the fact that there's a lot of opposition to this, but I think if you look at what Councilmember Hunt has done, that he's taken a lot of the negativity out of what is going to happen. And I support this because it's the best of all the options, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's others that wish to speak in favor, if you line up at the microphone.
My name's Kenny Norman. I've lived in this district for many, many years. I've watched some of the things that's happened. You know, we've got some big companies that are there that employ thousands of people. I'm speaking of UPS and FedEx. These people are looking for close housing around where they work, like a lot of other people in Nashville now. I think that they have really worked hard to have open space, preserve the trees, and Councilman Hunt has worked, and I am in full support of this development and hope that you vote favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Hi, I'm Jenny Leighton. I live at 6951 Old Hickory Boulevard, Whites Creek, Tennessee. And I'm here to support Councilman Hunt in this subdivision project. One of the things that I see as beneficial to Whites Creek is the fact that these, these subdivisions, as it goes in, will increase the revenue, i.e. property taxes, revenue increases, our infrastructure money increases, money for the schools increase. So it's a win-win in terms of property. As far as the cluster, I am not thrilled with the cluster, as I've discussed with Tom, but I have some recommendations that I've made him. But the fact is, guys, in a nutshell, I came with facts and figures, but I don't think we're going to need to get into that at this point in time. They can do a lot of things here that we wouldn't like. We've got this, we know what we've got, a bird in the hand's worth two in the bush. We've got a known, it's certainly within the realm of acceptability in terms of the green space, the attention to detail to the lots and the land. People have raped subdivisions before, and at least they're not going to do that. When they rape them, they come back and it is just awful. So I think that additionally, Walter Hunt represents the majority of Whites Creek, Tennessee. And if Whites Creek, if Walter Hunt says that Whites Creek needs a subdivision, then the majority of people in Whites Creek say that we need that subdivision. So I think that whatever Mr. Hunt wants, he should get as a representative of the majority of people in Whites Creek.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If you, the ones that do want to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone and line up behind each other.
Hi, I'm Bill Reynolds. I live on Knight Drive, and I appreciate Councilman Hunt, and, and I appreciate Old South for taking a step up. I, I would like to ask them to take it another step up. About 14 years ago, I was looking for real estate. I told my Realtor, I want some property that has a beautiful view. I want to look out and see green. And, and I, and I had to go 30 minutes east, 30 minutes west, or 30 minutes south of Nashville to find that. And finally, 10 minutes north of downtown Nashville, I found Knight Drive with a beautiful green everywhere. So two years later, I bought another house right next door. I now have 116 acres on Knight Drive. And during that 14 years now, I've seen Music City and Whites Creek create a beautiful, unique fusion of residence, farms, tourism, restaurants, wedding destinations, music and concerts, and bed and breakfasts, all beautifully right together. I've seen the, the community, which you're going to see here in a minute, all come together and support a cowboy town, a tourism place where also locals of Davidson County can come and ride horses and be in parks. Richard's Restaurant, Fontanelle, Cafe Fontanella, Cedarwood Mansion, the historic Cedarwood Mansion, where brides come from other states all over the country to have destination weddings, as well as Fontanelle. And two very tastefully done housing developments, one right across from Fontanelle and one right there by the Shell Station with beautiful brick siding. All I'm asking is, let's raise the bar a little bit. Let's ask these folks, let's please allow us to have brick siding instead of vinyl siding as you pull off Brierley Parkway and turn towards Whites Creek and start to look at Whites Creek. Let's please have a nice face to walk into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt and commissioners and neighbors, my name is Renee Bates, and I have property at 3814 Whites Creek Pike, and also Bates Nursery and Garden Center at 3810 Whites Creek Pike. This property is located at the front door of Whites Creek, the first impression from the highway of a community that's growing in a positive direction for the arts, agriculture, and tourism, so important to the Nashville economy. We are at the proverbial fork in the road. Whites Creek lies in a valley at the foothills of the Highland Rim of the Cumberland Mountains and has some of the most historically significant early homesteads and settings in the county. This property has gentle slopes on those hills, of those hills, and is said to have stacked stone walls and the remnants of an old mill. We're trying to retain the village character, and it's not to say that housing cannot be a part of this, and it's all in how it's done. We have something special here that we can all economically gain from if we proceed with a unified vision and pay attention to the details to help it succeed. The area knows much history and its rural character is primary to maintaining the leapers' fork-like image that we are building on. One and a half miles to the north, there are homes valued at $400,000. Yes, true, there are lesser properties in the area, but many will be replaced as an upward trajectory gains momentum. Because of the proximity to downtown, only five miles in a direct line, we have hope because people are finding the jewel that Whites Creek is, and they're moving here. Please help us with this opportunity. We're not saying no. We would just like to see brick on the facides of these or, or on more of these homes and an improvement toward the village feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Antoinette Welch. I live at 3857 Knight Drive. And I do realize we've actually heard multiple people say that they're building these homes on this cluster is within their right. That is true, but it's irresponsible to approve something only because it is within the right. It was zoned this way 40 years ago. So I ask in your discussion not to approve something just because you can. You need to take into account those of us that live there. People move to Whites Creek, the number one reason people move out there is because they want land. They want property, they want to be where it's rural and it's quiet, and that's what we have out there. And I ask you to consider the neighborhood. Your mission is the commitment to the preservation of distinctive and diverse neighborhoods. Just because we all live on large pieces of land or even small pieces, mine is only two acres, one of the smaller, that doesn't mean we're not a neighborhood. We are a neighborhood, and it is your job to uphold our distinctive nature out there. That is your mission. Those are the words that you've put on your piece of paper. It's, it is rural, and that's why we want it that way. Whites Creek is one of the very last places in Davidson County with that kind of property. I was excited to hear them talk about making downtown the hub, the residential hub. Great, that's what it's for. But doesn't Nashville need a balance to have something that is rural? We can't become one massive subdivision. If you are going to approve this, I, I hope if they're going to be good neighbors, that they at least try to make these properties at least an acre or a half acre per home. Whites Creek is not about duplexes. That's not what it is. Keep those in the residential hubs. Keep Whites Creek unique and diverse. And that is what I'm asking, and that's what I'm asking of your organization. You need to take that into account. We have to live here for the rest of our lives, and we chose it because it's rural. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Schraddin, and I am a resident of Whites Creek. Never thought I'd say that, I live in the country.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry, 6956 Old Hickory Boulevard.
Thank you.
What I do for work is, is run an old poster shop called Hatch Show Print Downtown. I've been there 30 years, and let's use that as an analogy. When I got there in 1984, it was basically a black forest. It was, it was unkept, untrimmed, but it was beautiful in the sense that there was potential there. So all of you that have these posters at home, as you move forward, planning whether to decide to approve the property as it, as it stands now, look at your posters and say, well, why don't we did them all the same way? Why don't we use the same colors? Why don't we use the same type? Why do, why do they all look alike, like these houses there? That's the black forest that we're looking at. All of those trees out there, we're not opposed to development. You're not opposed to us printing at Hatch. You want us to print at Hatch. We want, we want this to happen, but not the way it stands. We have a personal mantra over there, color, of course, and contrast. I see no color and I see no contrast here. 1973 is a long time ago. Let's update the codes. Let's rethink this. Once those trees are gone, it's gone. Once that concrete's set, it's set. It's your turn. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and thanks for all you do for the community.
Thank you. Please do not applaud.
Good afternoon. My name's Zach Dear. I live at 681 Brick Church Lane. I was actually encouraged to see some of the Nashville Next work that's been done because I have a feeling if you overlaid those principles against this development, you'd have a much different idea about what should be developed on this piece of property. Anyway, my wife, Jennifer Higandear, son, Whitman, and five crazy pets moved to Whites Creek last October. We actually lived in East Nashville before, and so I know a few of you from around the neighborhood, so good to see you. Superficially, East Nashville and Whites Creek may not appear to have much in common, but if you look closer, you'll see that they do indeed. Each possess passionate, diverse residents who understand that preservation and conservation, along with smart development, are the key that makes us unique as a community. After moving to Whites Creek for more space and to get away, we realized that we moved here at the right time because of meetings like this. Like we fought to have the Riverfront Park developed on the east side of the river, or when plans for the AMP somehow left East Nashville off the route, I wonder what that would have, I wonder what would have happened to that project had that not happened, we intend to fight to keep Whites Creek rural. I, I don't want to belay the point too much, but if you've ever driven to Whites Creek from Nashville, especially East Nashville, you've probably taken the Whites Creek Pike exit. And as some folks have mentioned before, that's, that's basically the, the front door to the hideout that is Whites Creek. And we think that this development sitting right there is going to be the bad impression for the rest of Whites Creek. We were told that the issue was a done deal when we met a week ago after hearing about this two weeks ago. And I know that that's not how, that's not how Nashville operates, and that's not how Nashville development operates specifically. We ask that you at a minimum defer this request, if not outright reject it. Either way, we need an updated community plan for Whites Creek. Within the Nashville Next process, please make sure that Whites Creek is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Travis Dockery. I'm with a cowboy town at 3665 Knight Drive. We at a cowboy town rely heavily on destination tourism, and we feel that, that suburban-style, non-rustic development in that area will detract from the romanticized vision of rural life that we rely on for our continued existence as a business. Building a lower-quality vinyl-sided house will detract from the rustic community feel of the Whites Creek area. In my opinion, it would be a shame to disrupt this rural setting, which is a gem only 10 minutes from downtown Nashville. We know that development is coming. Several homes have recently been built on and near Whites Creek Pike. They, though new, blend beautifully into the neighborhood and match the surrounding houses. We know that change is unavoidable. What we do ask is that the time to update our community plan is allowed so that we can welcome this change and not fear that it will alter the very things which first attracted the current residents in the first place and which attract the tourist dollars that we as a business depend on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Planning Commissioners and Councilman Hunt, my name is Elisa Batson. I live at 4712... I live at 4712 Lipton Pike in White's Creek. Thank you for allowing White's Creek a voice at the table today. I want to speak about the inconsistencies in the 2003 Bordeaux-White's Creek Community Design Plan. According to the report, it was made clear during multiple public forums that White's Creek wanted to remain rural in character and lifestyle, wanted to protect the natural features and environmentally sensitive areas of the community, and wanted to preserve our historic properties and heritage. The report states, quote, "The plan seeks to protect the natural features of the community by applying the natural conservation land use policy to environmentally sensitive areas north of Brierley Parkway." And also, quote, "Development is encroaching on the White's Creek Historic District at a rapid pace and should be limited to reduce negative impacts on this significant area." Quote, "Some see development as inevitable, but want to make sure it is of good quality and is strategically limited to appropriate areas." Bordeaux and White's Creek wanted areas of, quote, "New development concentrated in your existing residential civic and commercial areas," thereby, quote, "preserving surrounding rural land." Development goals in the plan included trimming back residential policy areas to protect flood-prone areas, preserving this unique rural district through sensitive development and design, and encouraging higher standards for development by using more natural materials. Twenty-eight out of 50 historical properties listed in the plan were in the White's Creek area. Despite this clear desire to keep White's Creek rural, the 2003 plan left almost half of our land cover in new residential growth and new commercial areas. It seems to me that the 2003 plan's designation of our 10 zoning on the Vista property north of Brierley Parkway, which with clustering of homes is functionally our 6 zoning, is not-- Boo. Can I finish? May I finish? It's half a sentence.
Give you five seconds.
Is not consistent with the community's documented wishes in 2003, is not consistent with the existing rural character and environmentally sensitive landscape of the Vista property, and is not consistent with the existing surrounding properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Angela Williams. I'm the ninth generation to live on our family farm. We started in 1785. You know you're--
Your address. What's your address?
7203 Old Hickory Boulevard.
Thank you.
We've been here before Nashville. You know you're White's Creek if you pronounce the elementary school there Elick Green, not Alex Green. You know you're White's Creek if you pronounce the boulevard going through White's Creek Buena Vista Pike, not Buena Vista Pike. You know you're White's Creek if you've been to the James Gang Festival. You know you're White's Creek if you listen to the White's Creek High School band on your back porch. You know you're White's Creek if you've stopped on Old Hickory Boulevard for a cow or a horse. And you know you're White's Creek if you've pulled over for a funeral out of respect. Metro has overlooked White's Creek for generations. We have been nothing but a blank spot on the map. So, we have a rock quarry directly across from this that blasts all the time. We have landfills in North Nashville. We have prisons in North Nashville. And yes, we have White's Creek High School that was approved in 1973, came online in 1979, which is one of the lowest-performing schools in Metro. Elick Green Elementary, where my grandparents taught and went, is now one of the lowest-performing schools in Metro. If we-- Real estate follows school success. Real estate follows community success. Our strength in White's Creek is that we are a community. We take care of each other. So, when this comes in, it's hard to accept. And I think working together-- We're not against development, but working together, we can do something great. We don't have to settle for this. Because Nashville needs something that's unique, not cookie cutter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Laura Fott and I own White's Creek Flower Farm. I live at 6921 Old Hickory Boulevard in White's Creek. The most unique aspect of White's Creek, in my humble opinion, is its diversity. It's the most diverse neighborhood that I've ever lived in, and I lived in New York City. It's a microcosm. I don't mean to be grandiose here, but it's a microcosm of what the rest of Nashville and really indeed the entire country should and could and ought to look like. We are black and we are white. We are old and we are young. We are gay and we are straight. We are rich and we are poor. We are Republican and we are Democrat. But we get along. We take care of each other. And we work together for the betterment of our community. We're not against development in general. We're against this kind of development. We want it to be smart. We want it to be beautiful. We want it to fit in our beautiful community. But if the city and development planners continue to push ugly, high-density, suburban sprawl, huge carbon footprint developments down our throats, which is what you'll really have to do-- I mean, you've seen this line here, you know we're all against this. It will have to be pushed down our throats. It will chip away at who we are as a community, and then that community will begin to die. And I don't think you, as human beings and citizens of Nashville, want that to happen on your watch. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Keratou. I live at 3536 White's Creek Pike. I've been in White's Creek for several decades and I attended all the planning meetings from '92, '96, '97, 2003. Do not recall a thing about this being discussed as 1973, but we can improve on anything we thought previously and we're willing to do that. I want to tell you a little of the history that Alec Green lived on this property and this property is 128 acres of history. You can write an entire book just on this property. His dad, whose name was George, was in the Revolutionary War, 1776. His son fought in the Civil War. He was a foremost minister in the area. He worked with the Sunday School, he worked with education, and he was big into publishing and started Nashville as a publishing city. He married Mary Elliston of Elliston Place. He worked in McKendry Church and became an elder and very respected. He was very forward-thinking. He owned stock in the First Railroad and he owned stock in the L&amp;N Railroad when it began. He also owned the original stock in the Nashville Gas and Light Company. He was a mentor to the Methodist Book and Publishing Company and helped start that. He was a trustee in the University of Nashville, Tennessee School for the Blind, Nashville Female Academy, and he was especially interested and helped establish Vanderbilt University. He was on the Board of Trustees, he was the treasurer, and his picture hangs in Kirkland Hall. You can go see it. The school up the street is named for him. There was a high school named for him. He loved this property. He had a farm there. It was called Greenland Farm. There was a road that ran in front of his property, ran 10 miles all the way to Dickerson Pike. On his property, there is acres of historic items. There is prehistoric things, there are Civil War items, and all sorts of things in between.
Keeps it buzzing.
So I think we need to preserve some of it as history and teaching for schoolchildren. I have three other issues I'd like to mention very quick.
Can't give me any more time, I'm sorry.
Can I just say three things real quick?
No, you're over your time now.
That there's springs on the property and wetlands, and there's water everywhere, and that the ground moves when they blast, so that putting homes there will make your house move. I took some pictures I'd like to just pass to you--
If you give it to staff, please, your time is up.
Okay. Well, thank you. We're glad to speak with you and we appreciate it.
Next person, please.
My name is Brian Bulble. I live at 5268 Simkins Road in White's Creek. I've been there seven years. Well, been back there seven years. I have an extensive family history that goes back to the 1800s. Swedish ancestors settled in White's Creek. And the historic significance is pretty big to me, but that's not what brought me back to White's Creek. The thing that brought me back to White's Creek was the unique rural setting that's 10 minutes from one of the best cities in America. I'm a graphic designer, I'm in the city a lot, I love Nashville, but there's something about being able to-- As soon as you get on Brierley Parkway, your blood pressure drops. I mean, it's just-- It's a unique place. I think we're breathing oxygen because White's Creek exists right now. So, as you heard from everybody else, we're not against development. We know that's coming. We're not, you know, we're not those people raising our fist that-- This is not happening in our backyard. We know this is happening. We just-- As you can hear, I think we have a pretty progressive view of our community. We want more than what is actually codes and-- And I don't think that's too much to ask as a community. We're coming together. We think this particular neighborhood is actually-- It's just barely cutting by with what's acceptable. And I think this has happened. We look at the suburban landscape across Nashville and the rest of the country and we see these homes that go in, not taking into consideration the character of the community they go in. They all look the same, no matter where. It's all about the profit and corners are cut wherever it can, and we don't want that. We want something more unique. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm David Wells. I live at 3460 Knight Road. I came to White's Creek to actually farm. I have five acres in that area. It sits right behind this development. I also have another job. I actually work at UPS and nobody really wants to live in the houses they plan on constructing. So-- But what we would like to live in is something that is a little better in quality and maybe less dense. That being said, this doesn't present that with anyone. I don't really particularly want to live on top of my neighbor when I move out to White's Creek. That's not the character of that neighborhood. I also am the Outreach Coordinator for Nashville Next and I've been working really hard trying to garner support for that project. Thank you for providing support for that. And what I'd like to say is that we're moving towards the character plan designed for this and we have a really outdated-- Excuse me. We are moving forward on a community character design and we have a really outdated community plan. It's 10 years old. That needs to be changed before we move forward. We live in a new century here that is dealing with climate change, is dealing with suburban sprawl, and we cannot continue with out-of-date development like this that was arranged for communities back in 1973. So, I suggest that we have more torn on any other development that is anywhere close to this until White's Creek can get a redesigned community plan because it's out of date. I thank you for your time, Councilman Hunt. I look forward to working with you guys. I look forward to working with this developer here on building something that is actually in character with White's Creek. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to have to leave the hearing. I just wanted to apologize to Councilman and to the applicant and to the community. This is really important and should the Commission decide to defer, I'll be sure to watch the rest of the video before the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have a corner.
Hi, I'm Helen Tarleton. I live at 7135 Old Hickory Boulevard in White's Creek. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Councilman Hunt, for the work that you've done. The last time I was here, I spoke in opposition to Fontanelle and the last few years have been an exercise in compromise for me. It's obvious to me that I'm in the minority about that. And as a result, I feel like it's my obligation to live with the impact that Fontanelle has in the area. It's been good for many people and I'm coming to understand that. But today, I feel safe in saying that I'm not alone in my sentiments about this development. I don't need to be redundant. I think it's-- The issue is that people in the community want something that is representative of the reason that we're there to begin with and that we don't see that this development is consistent with that. I think we have high hopes that we'll become a part of the whole greenway system in a way that draws people from the rest of Nashville to White's Creek because of what makes it unique and not as-- It being something that's so similar to everywhere else and has a strip of greenway that goes through it. So, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to request that we have a chance to come together to re-- Take a look at the plan for the community and that if you gave us the opportunity by deferring this approval of this project, that we could work together and achieve a compromise that everyone would be happy with. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Eric Wildridge. I grew up in the-- Sorry, my address is 5188 Old Hickory Boulevard. I grew up in the community of Scottsboro and have made my living farming there for the past six years. I have about 300 acres under my management. The proposed development at the intersection of Brierley and White's Creek is incompatible with Nashville's plans and desires to become a more sustainable city. Such development in a rural area, whether it's in Bell's Bend or White's Creek, only encourages more sprawl-like development. We support infill development in Nashville and not the planning decisions that encourage the destruction of our county's farmland and forests. White's Creek and Bell's Bend alike should be a ring of farmland around our city to be managed wisely for our grandchildren. We need more time to consider the impact of this proposal and I urge you to defer the vote until White's Creek is able to update their design plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tyler Skelton and I live at 5491 Old Hickory Boulevard. And I'm here to support the White's Creek community and I'm here to support their desire for a rural environment and a rural community. I also would just briefly want to reiterate the fact that the White's Creek Detail Design Plan is the oldest in the county. It's 11 years old. And I urge you to defer this vote until White's Creek is able to have their vision down on paper, their current vision of how they'd like to see their community grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hunt, Commissioners, my name is Tom Kearns. I live at White's Creek Pike in Old Hickory Boulevard. I have six parcels of property there, four homes all totaled. Some of the codes is wanted to tear down. I've gone through the codes, the planning commission, fought to keep some of them, tore down the ones that needed to go. I've seen the community grow. I've seen it move forward. Some things I weren't, I was strongly opposed to. I'm going to use an example of the two bridges, the new bridges on Knight Road. One of them was engineered too low. Now it causes major flooding. That's the first one. The other one's a high bridge. And as far as this community goes, we need to have a high bridge. We don't need to have a low bridge. It causes flooding with developments like this. It's just stormwater. It's going to back up and it's going to come back on us and it's going to damage our community. And I'm willing to work with these people. We need to raise that standard to a higher bridge and let the concrete cure properly before we flood an infrastructure and our rural development. So I ask you to take that into consideration when you make your decisions. Mr. Hunt, thank you for everything you've done. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't be glazed over. I see everybody is, but first, I know it's already been said, but your mission statement struck me when I picked up the paper.
Yeah, your name and address, I'm sorry. Your name and address.
Oh, Vicki Cooper at 3679 Knight Drive--
Thank you.
--in White's Creek. But anyway, the mission statement hit me when I picked it up out there. The words, you know, environmentally sustainable, preservation and distinctive neighborhood character, that's what we got. We got all that. So, just keeping those words in mind. Of course, I'm against the plan, the density. It's just mainly the density. I could live with the homes the way they are. It's a pretty picture up there, but when you put it in comparison to this one right here, it doesn't look so big because you're looking at this little spot with 43 homes. Yeah, we got this tisdall over here and we all know what happened there. So that's not what we want to see. We own 74 acres. We came from Dixon County four years ago. We're building-- 74 acres. We came from Dixon County four years ago. We're building pretty much a brand-new house. We've gutted the house that we have, spent a lot of money, looked at a lot of places, could have went to Brentwood. We chose White's Creek. That's what we want. We came from Dixon. So, we're country folk. We want to keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tim Cooper. I'm the other half of that one. 3679 Knight Drive. Like she said, we've been in Charlotte, Tennessee, where you have the path and sunshine for 13 years. But four years ago, we bought the Longhorn Ranch, which is a 74-acre equestrian property. We're under renovation and improving it for the last four years. Large lots and large acreages are, are hard to come by these days. We looked everywhere in Davidson County and, and wound up in White's Creek because of the feel of, of the area. It's a very comfortable feeling area, and it's rural, and it just felt like the, the right place to go. We have horses, and we have to move our horses to someplace where we have them, and we could have them there. So, I'm trying to preserve what I can as far as large acreages go to pass down to my family. The exit White Creek, White's Creek exit off of Bryley Parkway is pretty much the gateway to White's Creek. It's, it's our front porch, basically. And this right here, I think, is just a little bit too dense for what we would like to see. I've seen some pictures of the homes. They look nice in the front. The other three sides are vinyl siding. You know, if they could do a mixture of some other sidings, it would be a lot better, I think, if they could make the homes a little larger. You know, a couple thousand square feet, have the homes on a half an acre or more, that would be great. Use some masonry on the back. You, you know, better grades of, of product, the siding and stuff may, may not be such a bad deal. The roads, I don't think really Green Lane and all that is big enough to support it. I just ask you to postpone this development right here and maybe rethink it and make some lots larger, maybe homes bigger with better quality siding and product. That's, thanks for listening.
Thanks, sir.
My name's Jimmy Egan, and own the property next door to this. And that right there, that whole thing right there, one time, used to be part of the Greenland farm. And the young lady said a while ago, it's a lot of historic things there. It's on my place. My barn is built on part of the old Greenland house. It was probably about a 12-room house. Cisterns are still next to it. That preacher she was talking about built Greens Lane, Greens Lane to Dixon Road, and it come out behind Bill Robinson and Gail's old home place. The preacher's son got wounded in the Civil War. He come home to get well, before he got, when he got well, before he went back to the troops. He built his daddy a new church on the far hill. The bell tower and the church, and the church foundation is still there. I've horseback ride that thing since 1960. I've been living there. Down in that field right here, where the building is, stands in water all the time. And that's the way it is, but I don't think putting something down there, not going to get it. And what I'm here for is, when they were surveying this, they came over on me side of my house. Back in 1940, when that was surveyed, Greens Lane was like a small, little path, two cars couldn't hardly get across it. My fence line has been that way ever since it's been surveyed. When they came out here, here a while back, surveyed it, when they widened the road, what used to be the middle line become the right side of the road. And that's the middle line, and when surveyed, it came over in my property right into my backside bedroom. That ain't going to get it. Thank you, sir. I thank you for your time.
My name is Howard Ferguson. I live next door to Mr. Egan, and I agree with the people there. I think something could be built better. And me and him really know that this is a wet land. The corner down there will show you. I don't know how they going to get all of this 40-something houses in here and all of the guttering and all of the, where's all this water going to go to? I watch, I've been seeing them haul, all of the groundwater pipes and everything in the Pommer up there, if I'm saying the name right. They, they haul tons and tons of drainage, and it goes into a sump. Then the sump drains it over on somebody else's land. Where are they going, when all of these houses is built, and you already got a big wet land showing right there, where's all this water going to go to? Are they going to put all of this pipe in under this land like they did at Pommer? And then where are they going to dump it to? I mean, you told me about a lot of water. Green Lane's going to get flooded. Have y'all decided what you's going to do on that? But I'm for these other people. I wish they would defer it, and because of the wet land, and these lines that they surveyed, the line next to Mr. Egan, they give you these little maps. It's like, well, that line right there on Egan's line, they've got a, his, his D-line said, and it's the same as mine, 1,080 feet. They've got, they've got 1,038 feet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to say more.
Hello, y'all. Commissioner, y'all. My name's John Hooton. I live at 733 Flint Ridge Drive in White's Creek, on the backside of where they're going to be doing all the development. I'm just going to be straight to the point. I would love, old south for them to build, you know, the homes that y'all want to do, this 200,000 or whatever. It would be better property value increase for our area and homes, but I'd love to see it more of a, a rural kind of brick, hardy board, cedar wood, just a rural look instead of all this vinyl siding. Because where I live at, when I first moved in that subdivision, they did a lot of vinyl siding, and it's, it looks kind of bad. But I believe that's generally that you all could build something a little nicer, that, that looks more rural and 200,000 or whatever, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Bogle. I live at 3659 Knight Drive. We have a few concerns that I'm going to speak about. One is the traffic safety flowing through there. We calculate that 80 to 100 cars will, due to this development, will be added to the traffic. It's already an unsafe area. At White's Creek Pike and Green Lane, there's a blind spot there. So, we're asking for a safety and traffic study to be done, just so that everybody's safety is considered. Also, it's important to us that there's responsibility and accountability with the developers within this development, that the historical value, the evidence for history that is in the land not be destroyed. We were informed that the land is going to be clear-cut, all trees removed, and with that, there are dry stock walls, there are cisterns that we spoke of. There are Indian burial sites in the area. There's Civil War evidence and trenches that I personally found in the area, and if we go in and clear-cut that, the evidence is gone, and we lose it forever. So, what I'm asking for is maybe a historical survey, but accountability from the developers to take that step, to survey the land, to preserve what's there, if that means creating a historical park for the children and the residents that live in this community, that they remember the story that happened there. I also represent my five-year-old son. We spoke and talked to him about this neighborhood that was coming in, and he wants to know where their gardens are going to be, and where are the trees that they're going to get to climb. I know that the 26% or there's a percentage where the trees will be saved, will be there, but this is wetlands that they're going to be building on, and they're going to take the trees out. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Wright, and I live at 3831 White's Creek Pike. My brother and sister and I own historic Cedarwood. We bought that property in White's Creek because of the historic nature, because it was on the, the register of historic places. We hoped to see a growth and a blooming of that whole neighborhood in character with that historic architecture. And we have a house that was built in 1935. So, obviously, we are not happy with the kind of modern cluster developments like this, but also wanted to address really quickly the personality of our city, Nashville, and the fact that it is phenomenal that we are attracting brides from all over the United States and even as far away as Tokyo, Australia, Japan. They're all interested in coming to Middle Tennessee, to Nashville, for one of the biggest events of their life, their weddings, and they're bringing a lot of people with them. And the reason they are coming to Cedarwood is because they think that's in the country. They think that's Nashville, the countryside of Nashville, and that's the dream that they have. And there isn't a whole lot of areas still left that really qualify for that kind of feel that they can get to with ease. There's a significant amount of tourism that, that White's Creek can develop if we would just be mindful of the character that we're trying to preserve, and that is tourism, arts, agriculture.
Thank you.
I was wondering if I could say something?
Come up closer to the microphone.
I was wondering if I could say something. Okay, I live, my name's
Let me ask you, if you would, come up here closer and here where we can hear you, and hear what you have to say.
I try a lot, because some of my family, they've been preaching, and when I come home, I want to say something, and they're, they're
Hi, my name is George Hardy, and I've lived in White's Creek on Tisdale Lane at 3410 Tisdale since 1988 of June. I guess that is about 20 years or more. I've always walked in that beautiful area out there. I always thought it was, I even remember when Bryley Parkway wasn't there yet, and I walked down Bryley Parkway, and I said, we got, thank God when Bryley Parkway come, because I know this area going to get built up out here this. And then when I walked up White's Creek Pike there, around that rock break in there, and, and I saw the sewer pipes being laid, coming down the road, I said, thank God for them sewer pipes. They're getting ready to build up out here in this area now. So, you know, I'm not against it, but you know, I, I was amazed that when we met the last time, that I was impressed with the way the builder was saying that we could negotiate and do some of the things that we want, you know, you all to have out there. And I was impressed with that. And I think the area is ready for to be built. It actually is ready to be built. We got the sewer out there. We got Bryley Parkway out there, and it's a lot of people won't want it, but it's coming. They can't, they, they can't deny it, because that's what it's going to be. I realize it's a historic area, and I think the, the builder say that he was going to leave a lot of the trees and everything out there, too. So, you know, I'm for it. Thank you. And I won't say I want you to approve it or whatever, but you know, it's up to y'all to decision to make that. But I just wanted to express my thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Delaney, and I live at 3840 Knight Drive for the past 20-plus years. And I'm not discriminating against low-income stamp, low-income houses or million-dollar houses. It's being on postage-stamped lots. And you end up clear-cutting, erosion, and everything everybody else has said. I don't want to keep on saying the same thing. The other thing is the 2003 community design plan. It talks about three collector avenues or collector roads, and there aren't any houses there, and some of them would just go through lots of forest, and I wish you'd look into that. Actually, I wish you'd keep White's Creek beautiful. And if you think about it, your kids' kids would thank their great, great grandpops and grandmoms for having the rural area that they can come out to, ride horses, go hunting, and such. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, everybody. David Harder. I'm at 3783 Knight Drive, and it's getting hard. Everybody's said everything that matters, but I, I obviously am agreeing with everybody else. We really like our open spaces, and I think keeping White's Creek as open as we can will actually be not only good for White's Creek, but Nashville, you know. So many people that work here and come here, and everybody that I've talked to, they, if, you know, they love it out there. And so, I think that'd be a, you know, a great thing for, for everybody. And I, too, just wish we could see a little better quality stuff. And I know we're kind of going above the, you know, above and beyond with, with this, but man, I just wish we could do even, even better. Like, I guess in the last couple years, we've had a couple subdivisions put in, White's Creek Manor and what's the, the other one? Hardy Court. I mean, for new construction, all this stuff is, seems to be in the 250 to 350,000 price range. And I just think that's what we need if we, you know, we're bringing on new stuff, because it is inevitable. So, thank you, everybody, and have a good one.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wilma Buchanan, and I live at 3480 Knight Drive. I've been there almost 13 years. I've been before this committee before. We've asked you to do some things for us when there was a different person that was the chairman, and we didn't get that, so here we are again, asking again. I'd like to, first of all, extend to you an invitation. Won't you, if you're considering buying a house or moving and want to live in a wonderful area, move to White's Creek. I think you will enjoy it. The second thing I want to call to your attention is that in White's Creek, we have been blessed with the Fontanel. We consider them great neighbors. We want to capitalize on that, and we want Nashville to benefit as well as White's Creek. The homes that are being proposed now, 200,000, that may, that's a lot of money in a lot of people's, in a way a lot of people look at. But we would like to have homes that at least mimics or looks very similar are to the ones that are in White's Creek Manor. They're all different. They're all brick, and everybody seems to want to live in those homes. And I notice, compared to this development and Palmily Co., they're very similar. So, we need some variation. We need higher-priced homes. We need homes that will bring the price value up, that homes that you all would like to live in, in White's Creek. I thank you for listening. I hope you will consider everyone's that has spoken today, and I hope that you will make the appropriate decision for White's Creek in Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Bogle. I live at 3659 Knight Drive in White's Creek. Jeannie Nielsen, the executive director of the Land Trust for Tennessee, wisely said that as a city, we must plan for conservation in the same way we plan for development. Nashville is in the process of planning for the conservation of one of our most critical resources, a tree canopy. The importance that Nashville's residents and civic leaders places on this issue has been made clear in several reports published in the last 10 years. Together Making Nashville Green Report, the Nashville Open Space Plan, the Parks and Greenways Master Plan, Managing Nashville's Urban Forest, the Low Impact Development Manual, and the Green Infrastructure Master Plan. The Metro Tree The Metro Tree Advisory Committee conducted a tree canopy assessment in 2010 to determine what percentage of Davidson County is covered by shade. That report revealed that 62% of Bordeaux and Whites Creek area is covered by that shade. Although this is a healthy percentage, all of these trees are needed to balance, pardon me, to balance the least shaded areas of the county such as North Nashville, which is only 19%, and downtown, which is only 5%. They are now working to set a tree canopy goal for the next 25 years, both for planting new trees and protecting the trees we now have. Whites Creek existing trees are important because the trees provide the best benefit in air quality, reduce stormwater energy savings, and carbon absorption. The Planning Department's Nashville Next Project has found that residents want to protect the rural areas of Davidson County and focus development on infill projects. Old South's housing development would clearcut 11 acres of trees now, and they own an additional 119 acres of adjoining land covered in old-growth cedar groves, which will more than likely be clear-cut as well. When is it time to start planning for conservation? When do we stop allowing developers to destroy Nashville's critical natural resources? I submit to you that now is that time. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners and councilmen. I live at 3456 Knight Drive, where I have a small farm. I moved to Whites Creek three years ago, and I lived in northwest Nashville prior to that. I looked all over northwest Nashville and outlying counties to find the fertile farmland that I found in Whites Creek. Tom White, the lawyer for the developer, said that as business people here, we're all looking for certainty. And I have a business in Nashville. By the end of the year, we'll employ five people. It's not huge, but it's a lot more sustainable than Old South's developments. And we really can do better than this Old South development than they've proposed. All the people here invested in Whites Creek, not looking for certainty, but because of the rural character, the beautiful creeks, the cleanest watershed in Davidson County, and also the amazing tree canopy. This development will be the first thing that you see when you enter Whites Creek, and it is really, really dense. When you take a right onto Green Lane, when you look to the left right now, you see trees. And all the way as you drive to Tisdale and the Deer Meadows Development, which while dense, is not visible from Green Lane, most of the houses are tucked away and the road frontage is practically completely covered by trees. That is the opposite of this, which will have 12 driveways on Green Lane, which is a really tiny road. The developer also mentioned that they have 26% open space, and I'll submit to you, if you look at this map, that that open space provides basically no quality, quality of life benefit or aesthetic benefit, and really minimal environmental benefit. All the open space, the two acres, is going to be completely hidden from view. If the lots are 1,400, 1,500 square foot plus garages, 6,000 square foot lots, that's basically going to be a third of the lot size. There's no way that we'll see any of that green space in the back, and the front is really just a water retention pond.
Thank you. Could you please state your name again?
Oh, Sarah Bellows, 3456 Knight Drive. I live 15 houses away from this proposed development and two away from another property that the developer also owns at 3448 Knight Drive that they let fall into disrepair. It's now valued at $20,000 from the $135 it was valued at in 2007.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing done, Mr. White, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as I stated in the original presentation, certainty is what business people are looking for in a lot of different respects. With respect to this development, in some respects, when my client came forward in the summer of last year, what everybody needs to understand is he could have moved forward at that time, just pulled a permit, done a straight subdivision, period. So he chased the right thing for eight to nine months. He chased the right thing. He came up, if you compare these two, the straight that he could have pulled in July that he can pull right now. And you look at what's proposed here, there can be no comparison about what is better. If you look at your cluster lot requirements, which talk about open space, which talk about the sensitivity to the slopes of vegetation, there is no comparison here. What we have to stress is this is not a rezon. I want to stress to you that what you heard from the mic tonight, and you have to respect people that want to come in and protect their neighborhood, was we want to rezone the property, or we want higher-priced housing, or we want to be in a more rural agricultural area. That is not the issue before this commission today. The sole issue before you today is have they met the requirements for a cluster lot subdivision? They are surrounded by R10. This is not an island out here. It is surrounded by R10. That's the staff's presentation. There is a rock quarry which is extremely close to them. When we had the neighborhood meeting, the councilman started the meeting by saying the prices in this area, in his opinion from viewing everything, ran from $80,000 to $180,000. Our average price point is $200,000, which is why a number have said we are upgrading what is to be there right now. We're surrounded by the R10. Now, with this said, I would respectfully submit to you that the question today is, is this an appropriate cluster lot subdivision? Not are we rezoning the property, not should my client have gone back and done the straight subdivision. I'm urging you, this man chased the right thing for eight months in doing what he did. It should be approved. I think legally, you're obligated to approve it. He did the right thing. I appreciate your efforts and thank you. Would appreciate you approving this.
I declare the public hearing closed. Walter Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's, first, let me say I thank everybody for coming out and I thank for participating in the telephone calls, the emails I've received. Learned a lot from it. And I want to thank my fellow board members, council, I mean, council, planning commission meetings for all the time they put in this. This is an extremely important function for the city. You know, there was, back in June when I first encountered this, I didn't give very much thought about the request that I was asked to do until I started looking around that particular neighborhood, and then I talked to some people who live in that neighborhood. And I went and went the, down the metro and looked at the cost of some of the homes in that immediate area, which is around Flint Ridge, Green Lane, and they ranged anywhere from $160,000, $193,000, all the way down to $69,000. When he asked me about this particular, this subdivision, I said, "Well, look, I would like, if you're going to do this, to try to put a quality $200,000 houses in that particular area." The reason I said that, I thought I was doing something good, because when I looked around, there were nothing like that. The newest subdivision they built over there was Emerald Bay, which I had to go over there about four or five years ago and get every air conditioning over there redone, because they were green air conditioned, but whoever put them in failed to realize the government had changed the SEER numbers in them and had the wrong SEERS in them, and every one of them just bonked out. I was involved in that one. The average house in that subdivision, which was like six, seven years old, was $120,000 to $130,000. There were no talk of, there were no houses in that area at all that even resembled $200,000. Now, given the fact, I think I really appreciate some of the people said about the quality, because after hearing that, I talked to Mr. Floyd and I said, "Look, we need to look at, well, you need to look at the building materials on the house." So far, everything I've asked him to do, he has agreed to do it. I'm not holding up for him, but I know what I have seen in this community. I know what I've been involved with in building in this community. And you talk about Whites Creek Manor, that's there because I would not let him put $130,000 houses down there, because I'd already looked next door and there were, I guess, $350,000 house that Mr., where Jim's live. So you can't put $120,000 next to $130,000 house. Mr. Buchanan was in that meeting. We went round and round for several hours, but I would not let him put $130,000 down on Whites Creek right next to what Mr. Thompson had built. That's how you got Whites Creek Manor. So when I looked around that whole area, and I agree with what some of you said about the building materials, because I'm not happy with it too, either, but I still support. I think the people who live there have a right to enjoy a quality $200,000 house, because there are none in that area. Now, if it's worried about the building materials, I'll go along with that. We'll see what I'll ask him to do, and I think he's taking notes, because I'd like to see some improvement in that. And I don't think, I kept hearing the name, bouncy siding. Look at it closer, folks, because I thought it was bouncy siding too, but it turned out to be harder board than some of them, most of them. So you might want to look at that again. Wait a minute, I'm talking now. And so what I'm saying is, if there's bouncy siding in there, I like to know about it. I like to see it, because I would ask him to take it off. That's me personally. That's what I like to see when I go down through there. So I'm addressing you today as a councilperson for the third council district. Specifically, I want to give my opinion to you in respect of this cluster lot development. I'm asking this commission not to defer this matter today, but to hear this and approve this cluster lot development. I've received numerous calls about this matter, some on both sides. I've heard some good things and I've really heard some ugly things. And I can't define the word ugly, but it's been ugly. So when I, after I talked to him, I was in discussion about the, number one, the density. I was in a discussion with them today with that. And I think, and when I read it, they was talking about, oh, 47 dwellings, and I just discovered they was talking about two duplexes. Four duplexes, I'm sorry. That's not going to happen. They, that's out. Because for the four duplexes, it was talking about 47 dwellings. Take those out, you're talking 43. But that absolutely won't be in the, I made that clear today when we was talking, and I said, "Look," and I just discovered that today, by the way, because I went back over this whole package. And I told him, it's two things that I have vehemently opposed in the third district, and that is duplexes and apartment buildings. I don't have none of it, while I'm, if I could say something about it. So that's taken place. We talked about the building material, and I said, "You need to improve this, because I've heard from the night of the meeting, people say they're not against the development, they were against some of the building materials." I've already said that. So I've already gone over all these things with this person, and I appreciate you, because I, believe it or not, when you was talking, I was writing and I was listening. And those are the items that I came up with, and if we can approve that, I think we might be doing something good. So for that reason, I respect the request that this commission approve the staff recommendation, and I'm also going to ask for historical study, because we just got through doing one down at the ballpark, and I know how to get those done. And, Mr. White, you might have to pay for that too. So, but I'm going to ask for that in the morning. So with that, I make a motion to approve this project.
Well, I'm glad you brought up about the duplexes. They bothered me, and I, for one thing, I didn't know where they'd be located. It didn't really say. And there is really no specification as to say whether he could put them.
I'm sorry, sir, can you?
Where are, where would the four duplexes be located? Would it be specified that he could only put them in a certain area?
It is on this particular subdivision. In this subdivision, it's specified that the duplex lots would be lot one and two. Those are the two fronting Whites Creek.
Public hearing's closed.
And the other two are lots 12 and 42, and those are the two corner lots at the intersection with the street that goes into the subdivision.
Okay. I really have a problem with that. And is there anything that says, I mean, the councilman has got, I think, an agreement not to have duplexes, but is there anything that we can do as a way of an amendment that would absolutely make sure that there are no duplexes?
No.
So we would have to rely on faith?
Well, I don't know. They is right there. Didn't you not tell me today that the duplexes did not exist anymore?
My client has made the commitment there will be nothing but single-family homes, period. We've discussed that, we've been repeated with that from every neighborhood meeting we've ever had. No one has heard us say anything other than there will be nothing but single-family, period. And having said that, with respect to the motion tonight, if it's amended, that there's a clarification, no duplexes, we're asking for that. That's not a problem for us. If it's going to be a discussion about other things, let's be very clear about that. I don't have any problem with the motion to approve being amended, that there will be no duplexes there as a prerequisite. It's not a problem for us. We're asking that that be done.
Do I need to make another motion with the amendment to?
If you don't have a second, you can amend your motion if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project, this development, minus the duplexes, as stated.
Is it a second? I've got a motion, second. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, let me, another thought. The option of different materials, I understand that the front would be brick on all the houses, is that correct? And, okay.
The use, the condition of materials is not a condition or discussion that the commission can have.
It's not, but let me make my point. I understand that. That's not one of the things we decide. But who is going to decide on the materials? If the buyer comes along and wants to have more expensive materials put on three sides of the house, isn't that going to make the price of the houses more anyways? More than $200,000? If he chooses the more expensive? So in some ways, the buyers are going to determine the final price on the house.
That's correct.
That's all I have to say.
Ben.
Sure. I guess the question isn't whether this development is consistent with the subdivision regulations or the zoning code, because we know that it is. The question is whether this can be done in a way that is more in keeping with the Whites Creek neighborhood and done in a way to make the neighbors happier about what's going to come into their neighborhood. And we've talked some, obviously, about the aesthetics issue, and we've also heard concerns about floods, wetlands, traffic. Can someone talk to us about that, those issues?
We've got representatives here from Stormwater and Public Works that can speak more specifically about those issues, but I would say that both Stormwater and Public, I'm sorry, she was right behind me to address that.
Chairman, councilmen, commissioners, well, in generalities, this site generally drains towards Green Lane, and what happens is that there's some roadside ditches that will drain to the other side of Green Lane around Lot 7. So all the drainage comes to the road. It will come through the pond, it will go through a storm system, and it'll end up under Green Lane, and it'll go down towards the interchange. As far as the wetlands, we have, we have a pretty good wetland layer in our GIS. It's actually ultra-conservative. A lot of times it pops up as wetlands and there's nothing there. Actually, nothing popped up on this one. So we don't have any mapped wetlands on this side of the, on this side of the development. There are some features on the other side, but not on this side.
Okay, so no flooding is expected. Another, there are some letters that were sent to the commissioners regarding another development, that flooding had resulted from that development. I'm assuming studies have been done with this development that flooding would not be expected to occur.
Well, after the concept plan's approved, if it's approved through here, we'll get our construction drawings. And when the developer does a final plat, we'll post a bond, and we'll make sure that we don't release the bond until all the infrastructure is built for the plans. Councilman knows that we will definitely hold the bond. Councilman knows that we will definitely hold the bond. We've held it on another project too.
Okay, thank you. And I also had a question about the traffic.
Yes, ma'am. The, as far as traffic for this development, generally, a single-family is going to generate approximately 10 trips a day. That'll accommodate the coming and going. For traffic stated requirements for this development, with the size and the number of lots proposed is below the thresholds for traffic stated that would have been conducted by the developer for this project. There was, some of the neighbors made comments regarding existing traffic conditions. If there is existing traffic concerns, requests can be made with the Department of Public Works to study specific intersections. So, that can be, a request can be made from the public, or anybody can make a request for existing conditions to be studied. But as far as this development, generally, one lot will generate about 10 trips during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Stuart?
Thank you. I'd like to start by congratulating Councilman Hunt for the work he does with his district. And sometimes it's not easy, and sometimes you're not going to satisfy much of anyone when you're talking about change. But you do a good job. I think this commission and the city as a whole made a pretty strong statement a few years ago, when, in the face of some fairly, shall we say, well-financed planning and well-financed public relations, we chose to make a statement that parts of the northern part of this county were not really open for a new downtown. That was a surprise to a lot of people, but that's what we did. And that has proven to be a pretty good thing, because it's continued a resurgence of local agriculture, small-scale agriculture, which, not just emboldened, it's here too. And I understand how that is an important thing for the city. And that that is not necessarily in conflict with something that I think we also believe, even without Hunter here, we still believe that density is not a bad word for the county as a whole. It's just not, and without more density overall, we're in trouble as a community. And that doesn't mean this particular way of doing it is the only way of doing it. But I think the larger issue that we need to be clear about is that not every part of the city has to be the same. But that overall density, especially infill density, is not something to be feared, but something to be guided and lived with. Because there are people who want to live here. And they want to work here, and they don't want to have to live in other counties to have jobs here. So it's not an easy thing to balance all these interests. And I, I'm very sure that people in this area would rather not have any change. I felt the same way where I live. It's, it's not clear to me that we've made it clear enough to everyone here, that the zoning code itself, and the fact that it is zoned this way, it's not just something that gives us the opportunity to approve something. If all the subdivision regs are met, it's not just an opportunity to approve something. It is a legal mandate. And I know people don't like to hear that, but, you know, this is, I'm not exactly a zealot on property rights, but somebody owns this property. And I'm inclined to think that we will be approving something. Where I have a problem is just making sure that we're applying the proper rules. And this may be coming out of left field, but I'd like some help from staff on this. I know this, this is a subdivision. I know there's a couple of different ways to look at our subdivision regs. But Rick, would you read for us the basic language of the regs in terms of what we're supposed to look at?
You can warn me if I did.
That's why we pay you for it, to know what I'm going to ask you.
I'm talking about the broad, the broad thing we're asked to look at.
Basically, the purpose of your subdivision regulations are intended to provide for the harmonious development of the municipality and its environs, for the coordination of streets within subdivisions with other existing or planned streets, or with the plan of the municipality or the region in which the municipality is located, for adequate open spaces for traffic, recreation, light and air, and for the distribution of population and traffic, which will tend to create conditions favorable to the health, safety, convenience, and prosperity.
So, at what point, I know we've had way more discussion than most commissioners want to hear about, about subdivisions in the past meetings, but at what point do we look in this part of town, in this kind of an area, at compatibility with existing subdivisions?
Well, the provisions that would apply are the, currently, the provisions that would apply are the general subdivision regulations that apply all across the county, which would include the cluster subdivisions or the infill subdivision development, if that would be appropriate. One of the issues that we've had discussion during Nashville Next, and we think is appropriate now that you have resolved the issue of distinguishing in character in effect for urban subdivisions in terms of the infill subdivision definition, is the need to develop what we're calling, at least temporarily, a rural character subdivision, which would be appropriate. And then you would combine the zoning and the subdivision regulations in terms of making that decision as to what would be appropriate.
So that's what we're looking to work doing, but not what's in place now?
It's not in place, correct, now.
Are we not charged with some broad language to look at comparability, generally, besides harmonious, the word harmonious?
No, that, not, especially not through state law. The provision of comparability is an opportunity for the commission to establish that standard. And you've established it with regard to infill subdivisions or other, I mean, the other way you define comparability in terms of your evolving areas is in simply consistence with the zoning. So that's, you've defined it that way, and you've said in terms of areas that are predominantly developed, then you look at comparability in a different way, which is in context of what's around it.
Do we have a slide that shows whether this is predominantly developed?
The subject side is highlighted in yellow on the slide.
So those small lots on both sides of it are subdivided lots?
No, they are not previously subdivided.
And that's the problem, isn't it?
The problem is that in the infill subdivision section that you adopted, the lots have to be subdivided and predominantly developed, I think, are the terms. In the definition of infill subdivision, it says that they shall be subdivided or predominantly That is why the staff did not recommend this be done under an infill subdivision provision.
So how do we decide between those two, when it might lead to different results? The general language of the subdivision regs or not? Was that a legal question that we should?
I think you've got the authority to make the call. I don't think it boils down to just some sort of a legal interpretation of the applicability of the subdivision regs. You know they apply, but in this instance, I think you've already got all of the criteria laid out for you to make the decision on one way or the other.
I would, though, suggest that if you want to deal with the infill subdivision, you allow us to go back and research and present you information on that.
Well, I, I'm not really sure what the research would show if we decided that this was substantially developed, which looks like it might be, depending on how we looked at it. But I'd kind of like to know, did you have something on this? I mean, I'm thinking, I don't know how many lots that allows, if this is substantially developed and we're looking at.
Well, I was just going to explain to you. Mr. Michael's right. I mean, ultimately, it's the commission's decision, as we hashed out here recently, over another term, to decide what the meanings of the subdivision regulations are. And as Rick pointed out, that we've got the general definitions of what infill are, and then you have the more specific 3.5 portion of your subregs that deal with infill development. And within that section, it is specific that it says that they are, that infill subdivisions and the analysis that you do about its appropriateness is done on properties where you, where the properties have been subdivided and are predominantly developed. So it has to be both for us to use the infill regulations where we look at comparability.
So those that are on both sides of it, well, they're just not subdivided?
Correct.
They're developed, but not subdivided?
Correct. They're not subdivided under the definition of subdivision, of subdivided property within our code, within the Metro Code.
Well, I, as you probably remember, I'm kind of a supporter of looking at subdivisions in light of what's on both sides of them, as a general rule. And I would like to think more about that. If I were the councilman for the area, I would really not want a deferral. But there's a part of me that would like to know the answer to this, to think more about this specific issue as to what we measure against. And I also recall that two members who heard most of this discussion had to leave for reasons unrelated to this issue, and another member asked us specifically to be part of the discussion, but was out of town. So I'm not really sure what the will of the group is, but part of me thinks that while we've closed the public hearing, we ought to have those other three people, and ought to have a result, ought to have a staff sort of analysis of this question of whether we look at the comparability of this proposal to the streets on both sides.
We have a motion second on the floor, and I'd...
Right. And my comment is, is discussion regarding that motion to suggest that a way to look at it would be that maybe in light of this issue and the three people missing, we, not that we necessarily reopen the hearing, but that we might want them here.
I'm not, I don't, Chairman, I'm not going to go to say that we ought to wait till everybody's here, because next time, two or three others may be, we got a motion second on the floor, I want to hear from the other two, then I'm going to call for a vote.
First, I want to thank all the neighbors for coming out tonight. These types of subdivision regulations are very complex, a lot of legal issues at hand. It's a long process, but I appreciate everybody coming out. And I want to assure you that the Planning Commission and your councilman, who served with Mr. Hunt, are listening. My questions on the water and wetland were answered in the road infrastructure. Well, the one question that I heard from some of the citizens was, there was a blind spot. Can we go back to the, show the road slide? Oh, well, where is, on this one we'll do, where is the blind spot at? Is that at the corner?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what blind spot they're referring to.
Green Lane.
There's a blind hill where you can sight before you get down there, and it's dangerous. There is, there is an elevation on White's Creek Pike, where if you're at Green Lane, the crest is along the north side of this property.
But I'm assuming that the traffic study will look at that to figure out if that's a, was?
Jonathan, how do you go with the Department of Public Works? With this development, there was not a traffic study that was conducted, because with the number of units, it was below the thresholds that would require the developer to do a study. So, as far as a study conducted, there was not one specifically for this development. If there is an existing traffic condition, the Department of Public Works can study that location, this request has to be made for that location.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that the councilman may request that traffic study and figure out if there's a dangerous blind spot. We want to make sure that if there's more traffic, that that gets addressed. The other issue was, that was brought up, was the question about tree canopy. And I wanted to, I wanted to see on the subdivision, I know we have an urban forester and tree policy, what, when the subdivision's built, what is the, what will happen with the tree requirements?
Well, they have to meet the tree density requirement. That's 14 units an acre. This is 11 acres. They've committed to preserving the open space B, which is roughly just over 2 acres. They've committed to preserving that in its entirety, with the exception of, obviously, the shown recreational space. So, as a subdivision, if it's approved, as it moves through the development process, they definitely have to meet the landscape requirements.
So they'll meet the tree density requirements with the approval of the subdivision?
They have to.
Okay. Thank you. That answered my question on that. I have one last legal question. And Mr. White said that if we didn't approve the subdivision, new subdivision cluster, that by right or by law, the builder could build the original subdivision. And I just want to get a crystal-clear clarification that by right, he could go down to codes and pull the?
That is not correct. By right, he could apply for a normal subdivision. It would still have to be approved by this commission. It's still a, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Couldn't go pull building permits if that's what...
Until the subdivision's...
Approved by this commission, correct.
Got you, thank you. That's all I have.
I'd like to hear, there's a motion second. I want to hear what the motion, Kelly, do you have that? But he went back and amended.
This motion to approve an amendment is without the duplexes, which would be four single-family houses.
Motion is to approve staff recommendations with no duplexes being allowed.
Right.
Correct. Okay, that's the motion, the second here, all in favor. That's what?
I had something I wanted to say about that. I'd like to say that I think folks have made very good points. I don't always agree with them. I don't live in a house that has 3/4 vinyl. Mine has 100% vinyl. It's next to a house that just sold for $750,000. So, it's all a matter of kind of taste, because some people like vinyl houses. So there's a lot of things I didn't agree with, but I do agree with the people who care about their history and care about their community. I also think, and I know it's not going to be popular, but I think there is a right to this subdivision, under law. I'm not sure there's a right to this number of lots. And I think, I think that we may, in light of what surrounds it, if we could see that again, and of what's on both sides of it, I think we may need to use our subdivision regs and measure the closest five on each side, and see if this is consistent with those lots. So I offer that, not in opposition to what is, what the staff has recommended, because they've recommended approval of a subdivision, and not to be silly about it. I just think there's a legitimate dispute about which way we look at this. And it sounds like the staff is convinced that there is a legitimate question, but that we might need to be doing the measurements that we have in our infill subdivision regs.
Stuart, I don't think we've ever done that, and you, in my opinion, if you did that, you'd be downzoning... that, you'd be down zoning the property. We're not allowed to do that, because it's R10, and they're allowed 43 units.
That's absolutely not true, based on our subdivision decisions for many, many years. Zoning itself does not give you a right if it's out of conformity with the other subdivisions and other lots right around it. So I don't think that's true. Now, it may be that the calculation comes out to 43 after we look at it. It doesn't look like it to me. But I don't think it's true, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, that we're bound to... That it's down zoning to apply subdivision regs. If I'm wrong as a legal matter, then that's fine, and I'll support it at 43, frankly, unless that's the wrong measurement. Does that make any sense to people?
Let me make a comment. I think, if I'm hearing you right, and I'm not sure, but I'm asking you, you're saying a subdivision has to be in proximity with the same amount or compatible with the number of lots. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it sounds like there's at least a 50-50 chance, from the way I'm looking at various regulations, that that's the case, that we need to have a little more guidance before we vote on it, because it sounds like, in an area like this, which is developed on both sides, that you may need to use comparability standards and not just what is the zoning and what is the general plan. That's all I...
Even if that's the case, you just walk right across Knight Road, count the houses in Emerald Bay, and they will be the same size.
But our subdivision regs specify which ones are the relevant nearby lots for us to look at. That's the issue.
That would be Emerald Bay.
No, it would be... Oh, is that right?
It would be the five lots on either side. Five lots would be on White's Creek and five lots that are on Green, on the same side of the road.
Oh, that's what I'm trying to get, on the same side of the road. I don't know.
Because that's the regs we just adopted.
I don't need a lawyer to interpret that. I don't know. It don't make sense.
In looking at the map, the lot, I guess it's what looks north of this, 167. Is that a subdivided lot, or is that just... What is that?
We believe, after reading the definition of subdivision, as I mentioned before, there are two terms that come to art as to whether or not this is an infill subdivision or a standard subdivision. And that means it's previously subdivided, and it is predominantly developed. Now, the definition of subdivision that we had originally been using was one that was a platted subdivision. The actual definition of subdivision that's relevant in the subdivision regulations does not limit it to simply platted subdivision. It basically limits it to divided into parcel sites, units, plots, or interest of less than five acres. And we would need to go back and verify whether or not these are in five acres or not. And then, if, in fact, it met the criteria that this commission established and you agreed with that interpretation, there's two parts there, then it would need to be evaluated based on the infill subdivision regulations and not the standard subdivision regulations.
Well, how have we been doing it? I mean, that's the question. I mean, there's a lot of subdivisions around this area. How did we determine that they met the subdivision regulations?
They met the subdivision regulations that were in existence at that time.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Unless the guy that made it, the person that made the second withdraws, or the maker withdraws, then I'm bound to call for the question. So they should speak up and say you want to withdraw. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to see a show of hands, all in favor, all opposed. Motion carries. Philip, do you have anything from Farks?
We will have our meeting on Tuesday at Farks Department. There are four acquisition items that will be coming up, so come by and see us if you'd like to, 12 o'clock.
Walt, do you have anything that you want to add?
Not at this time.
Rick, you got something quick you want to wind up?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think that the director's report is pretty straightforward. The question I have for this commission, though, is do you wish us to continue to work forward on rural-character subdivisions?
I think that'd be good. Yeah, I think that'd be good. Part of Nashville Next.
Well, it's... Yeah, we can bring it forward before that. I mean, it's something that we believe, having investigated the infill subdivision and having character districts that are more appropriate for certain community character areas, we could bring forward some subdivision regulations that would be more in keeping with the rural character as opposed to suburban character. Okay, unless there's opposition, we'll continue on.
Any other comments?